Hello, hello. All right. Thank you very much for your patience. We are having a little bit of technical difficulties. We may not be able to see the speakers from Zoom on our overhead projector. So we will just make do with and try our best, but I want to make sure that this move, this meeting starts. So let's go ahead and convene today's meeting. It is October 5th, 2021, 9:06 a.m. This is the regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors, and we will commence the meeting with a moment of silence, which I believe Supervisor Crandall has one, and we have others as well. Or did you want to make a comment before we?
I just want to make sure our clerk of the board, Assistant Clerk of the Board Johanna Peelin, is online with us and can hear the meeting.
Oh, yes.
Johanna?
It's working.
Johanna, can you hear the meeting?
She's muted at the moment.
Johanna, can you hear? So she was unmuted for a moment and then re-muted.
Where is our, and I apologize to those listening in and in the boardroom. Where is our sound coming from? Because the boardroom visual is muted, and I don't see anything else unmuted on the entire panelists that are currently available. So I doubt that anyone is hearing us in Zoom.
And the Assistant Clerk of the Board is telling me she can't hear anything.
Right.
She is ready.
And that makes sense. Thank you for checking in on that before we get started. I don't know if it's IT-LPT or Admin-LPT that needs to be unmuted.
Yeah, it's IT-LPT needs to be unmuted. Thank you. We have permission to be unmuted.
Okay. Now Johanna, can you hear us?
Can you put your mask on? Thank you.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Perfect.
I couldn't hear you before.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Hard to respond if you can't hear to any other questions we were asking you. All right. So I think everything is good. We have video. We have sound. Now let's go ahead and start our meeting. And Supervisor Crandall, we were with you.
Thank you. First and foremost, I would like to conduct a moment of silence for the folks that lost their or were affected by the Robin fire in Lucerne. And I wanted to thank the, you know, Fire, North Shore Fire Department for getting right on that and conducting what they needed to in order to mitigate that situation. And second, I would like to, because it is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, I would like to offer a moment of silence for Gracie McDonald and her family.
Supervisor Pyska, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. I did submit an item this morning, and I believe it is on our agenda today, if you refresh the agenda. And consideration of an item discussing the, it's an extra item regarding a project in North Lakeport that we have been working on, and it is a meeting that is being requested of us to attend, that will be on Monday, October 11th. I wanted to bring this to the Board for approval of a delegation to be there with the meeting at the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. And since the meeting is on Monday, this came up on Friday after the posting of the agenda, and needs to be completed prior to the next posting of the next agenda. And that is my reason for the extra item. Looking for a motion to approve. Oh, yes. Sorry. Thank you. Any public input on adding this extra item? And hearing none, bringing it back for action.
I move to approve this extra item as it came up after the posting of the agenda, and it needs to have action before our next available meeting.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we'll take that up at a later time when appropriate. Do we have any other extra items to add on? CAO Hutchinson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm requesting an extra agenda item, Public Employee Evaluation, title Director, Health Services Director. This item came to my attention subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and there's a need to take action before the next agenda.
All right. Are there any comments or questions about the extra item? And then opening it up for the public, just on the addition of the item, not the item itself. Any comments? And seeing none, bringing it back to the Board for action.
I move that we approve the extra item.
Second.
Was that enough, or do we need to state, restate the reasons?
Approve on the grounds already stated by the CAO. So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Recording in progress.
You guys are silent again.
Yes.
We went silent again. So she didn't?
She can't hear us.
Did we go silent again?
Not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
I can't hear you.
So we seem to have lost IT-LPT.
Johanna, are you hearing us at all?
No, we lost, we lost it.
Is that a word by Dr. Atticus?
Yeah, the one that was IT-LPT has disappeared from the panelists.
And in the same phenomenon exists in the Zoom webinar, there's no audio. So...
And I am promoting IT-LPT to panelist. As they were in the...
Recording in progress.
Now can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm just gonna do a brief, quick summary. Not sure when things went down, but we have an extra item that has been offered to the Board as it came up after the posting of the agenda, and a motion has been made by Supervisor Pyska, second...
Just one moment, please. I just want to confirm with someone in Zoom that they can hear, because this is important. So, okay, and they can. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And that was a second by Supervisor Simon. And now we are doing roll call. Johanna, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall there?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, we'll pick up that item when it is appropriate. Let's go ahead and, any further extra items before we move on from item four? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to approval of the consent agenda. Any items from the agenda that Board of Supervisors wish to pull? And hearing none and seeing none, let's ask the public, any member of the public wish to pull an item from our consent agenda for further conversation? And seeing none and hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.20.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public input, our 9:05 a.m. item. If anyone wishes to speak to the Board on any items that are not on the agenda today, you have three minutes. Let's start in the boardroom. Please come up to the microphone. Please provide your name. And again, you have three minutes. And if you're in the Zoom room, press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you're calling via telephone, dial *9, and we will get to you.
My name is Randy Pleasure. I live at 19455 Bus Canyon Road. The property next to me is a cannabis growing operation. Now, they've been hauling in water, this, I know you got the hauling today, but anyway, they've been hauling in water, several trucks a day, but the last couple of weeks, it's dropped down to one. Now, of course, they're, they're, cultive, I mean, they're cutting their crops now. They're done for the season, except this gentleman is going to go back to hothouses. Now, my question is to you. You guys approved that, that hydrology report that they had to have it? Well, you also gave this man a permit in July. Now, does he get a free pass on a hydro, that hydro, well, the exam? I mean, does he? I mean, okay, I've lived here for 60 years. I mean, I am a resident. I've lived in the property that I have now since the late 90s. I've gone through several droughts. Okay, my water is dead, and has been dead for three years. Not just this year, three years, ever since the new well went in. And I need to know where the water is so I can borrow the money to have another well dug. Okay, it does me no good to put a well in now without, without that hydrology report, and it should be on his back, not mine. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm on a fixed income. I can't afford it. Okay, that's really all I have to say there. Thank you. I would like to say that I believe Moke Simon is doing a heck of a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And any further comments in the public in the boardroom? Please come on up to the microphone.
Good morning.
And if you could please put your mask on, we're gonna hear you.
My name is Rayo Levi. I live at...
Sir, if we can please have the mask on?
Sorry. I gotta take my glasses off because it fogs up. My name is Rayo Levi. I live at Riviera West. The first time I came to this Board, I handed you a document and asked the simple, one of the things that I asked was a very simple question. Who is responsible for the studies, the committees, the work, the reports, the public in the county for the water, and what they're doing about it? I received, and finally, an answer back from one of the committees. There is no central database or point of contact for the information you are requesting. So right now, we're in a position where nobody, there's no place for us to go to get the information unless we go step by step by step through every place in the building and outside to try and get solid information as to the position of this county on what's happening with the lake. That makes it extremely difficult. And UC Davis didn't help us out much in that effort either, because they did a study on the sediment in the lake, and they forwarded it to the USCG, US, United States Geological Society, or whatever, survey. And they said, UC Davis said, if you have any questions about the results of this study, that's something extremely important, you have to go to the government office. There's no place in here that I can find the answers. Then when we went to find the answers, you had to be, matter of fact, one of them was, you had to at least have a master's degree to understand what was being reported. So I'm asking the supervisors, because you're responsible for me, for the lake, the environment, everything else that takes place here. Why do we not have a place to go to get this information without having to go from department or whatever to everything to get an answer? There is no central database for us to work with. It appears that there's no central supervision over the committees that we're doing, and there appears to be no central way in which the county can report back on what's going on in the lake. We all know about the fact that the mercury is still leaking into the lake. We know it's in the sediment. There's a couple brands of mercury. And nobody's got a plan. They say, yes, we have it here, but there's no solution or no attempt at a solution in the effort to get that stuff out of the lake. We'll never get it out of the lake. And we're not even sure that you can even stop it from coming in from the land right now. People have talked about building a dam and everything else. The sediment's going to keep going down, and it's going to work its way in. So we're asking for help. We're asking for somebody in the, on the Board to take charge or appoint somebody to take charge about what's going on, because there's too many different places for us to go. And as I said, there's no, nobody has a report that they can hand to the public that the public could understand. They hide behind all of the technological language and everything else, and it makes it very difficult. Some of the people looking at it right now are highly educated, are scientists, and they're going, this is crazy. What's going on in your county? I don't know. So we're asking you to please help or to give us some hope or appoint somebody that can coordinate all of this. When I was listening to the committee meetings, they were, it became a discussion of money.
And sir, if we can go ahead and get to your final comment, your three minutes are up.
Who said that?
Right here.
Oh, okay. I got lost for a second. Matter of fact, I'm lost right now. That's all I'm asking for. And please, can you at least have somebody let me know and let the public know? Maybe have a public meeting where you bring in all of the experts, and we, and they give us their reports and what they've actually done. Lot of studies, but nothing's...
Thank you, sir.
Lot of studies. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Any further comments in the boardroom for public comment? All right, let's go to the boardroom. We do have a hand up. Let's go ahead and ask Adam to go ahead and speak. Again, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
My name's Adam Gates, and so I've been here for quite a number of years myself, and I'm currently seeking treatment for inpatient services. I've spoken with, with Lake County Behavioral Health. I've spoken with everybody I can think of to do it. I know that you guys have money allocated for, for this purpose, but it's not being spent. I don't know what the holdup is on it or whatever. Meanwhile, people out here are dying from this, this epidemic of drugs and everything going on here. And I know there's other things that, like the Comprehensive Addictive Recovery Act, that's allocated over $800 million for these same type of projects. And I just don't understand why it's so hard to, to get into a treatment program when you're actually seeking it. It doesn't make any sense to me. And so I'm just trying to ask you guys, can you guys maybe get the ball rolling, try to figure out how we can get some of these funds put into action? Because, like I said, I've tried everything. I'm trying to get into a program, trying to get my son back, and it's just, I've hit a brick wall here. And, and believe it or not, Lake County Behavioral Health only has four beds available for the entire county to put in inpatient treatment. And to me, it just doesn't seem like it's, it doesn't seem right. I mean, it just shouldn't be this hard to, when you're seeking treatment, to get it. And I know it's been very difficult. I've contacted the Governor's Office. I've contacted members of your Board, as well as coming here today to try to speak to you guys and see. I mean, Jessica said that it's more of a long-term goal, but it needs to be a short-term goal. Something needs to be done about this, like, right away. I mean, like I said, people are dying out here. And so that's basically all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. And seeing no further hands or in the boardroom or in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and close down public comment. And let's move on to item 6.2, 9:06 a.m., consideration of update on COVID-19. And I believe that today, we did have Dr. Charlie Evans that was planning to be here. There was an emergency that came up, and I believe we have a video that we will be playing today to provide the update. And so if we can go ahead and play that video, that would be great.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, for inviting me back to speak to the Board. I apologize that I have to give this taped message as I am on shift in the Emergency Department tomorrow in Petaluma. Since I last spoke, we have seen a constant but steady decline in our numbers of new COVID-19 infections. Very encouraging. It appears that this virus runs in cycles, and the decline in our numbers is consistent with what other counties and states, countries are seeing. The cycles tend to be every two to three months. It's poorly understood why it runs this way, just as fast as the infection goes up. After eight to 12 weeks, we see the infection rate start to decline, and it comes back down as fast as it started. We have seen this phenomenon across the world. Probably the first time we saw it was in India. Unfortunately, in India and in many other places across the world, when we saw the decline, the decline didn't come down to the same low baseline from which it started. So in May of this year, we reached our low point in the COVID-19 pandemic with 3 per 100,000 infections. Currently, we were at about 38 per 100,000. We peaked in early August at around 70. 38 per 100,000 is still dangerously high, with lots of circulating virus in our community, but it's much better than 70. We need to see these numbers continue to decline as we move into the winter and into the holidays. This is important because we do expect with people moving indoors and as the temperatures begin to drop, that we will have more transmission within the community. We are seeing this in the state of Alaska right now, where infection rates are over 150 per 100,000, twice what we were at our peak. It is good news that we are seeing a drop in our new cases, but we must not let our guard down again as we did last spring. Since July 1, 2021, we have lost 100,000 people in this country. In Lake County, we've lost 29. Each of these people have families with mothers, fathers, grandpas, grandmas, children. And the current statistics show that many of these people who died were much younger than those who died in the beginning of the pandemic. To those families who are grieving, please accept my, my greatest sympathy and condolences. The process of dying from COVID-19 is, is a horrible experience, the isolation, the aloneness that the patient feels and that the family feels. And, you know, I see it every day in my work, and my heart goes out to you families that have experienced that. We see regularly in the media, people who speak out to get vaccinated after they have been stricken by COVID-19. In Sunday's Press Democrat, there was a rather poignant article and a plea from a Tennessee police officer who had COVID-19. He wrote from his hospital bed and a text to his police chief, quote, "When I can't take three steps to get to the potty chair, and I feel like a grizzly bear just choked me out, that's gotta be the worst feeling in the world. You have got to tell people to get their shots." Unfortunately, this policeman, father of five children, married, died two days later. He was not vaccinated. So vaccinations are our ticket to getting out of this pandemic. And let's talk about vaccination. This is some good news. Between September 1 and September 25, we were able to give 2,700 vaccines in Lake County. This is more than 100 a day, which is an increased rate of vaccination from last month. An additional 600 people are fully vaccinated, and additional 600 people are partially vaccinated. Currently, about 60% of those eligible for vaccine are vaccinated in Lake County, compared with 70% statewide. Statewide, 22% of those eligible have received no vaccine, and in Lake County, it's about 32%. We are doing better, and we still have opportunities. So I want to speak about the jail outbreak, just to update you. I think this is another success. We peaked out with 83 cases, 11 staff and 72 inmates. Currently, there's only one active case, a staff member. I think if we can get that staff member better and be excessively cautious, we might have, have worked our way out of this outbreak. Congratulations to all of you who worked hard to do that. Wanted to speak a little bit about how the hospitals are doing. Hospitals are still struggling to staff. Beds are in short supply. This morning at 9 o'clock, there were three ICU beds available in Mendocino and Lake County combined. That's very, very few, considering the large population. And I think that's true throughout much of Sonoma County as well. In my work as an emergency physician, I constantly struggled to place people in the hospital, sometimes waiting up to 24 hours to transfer them as far as 200 or 300 miles away. So it's, we're still struggling with bed availability. Many of you are aware that the Pfizer vaccine has a booster recommended. I wanted to talk about that. On September 24, the CDC Director Rochelle Walensky stated that "We can best serve the nation's public health needs by providing booster doses for the elderly and those in long-term care facilities, people with underlying medical conditions, and to adults at high risk of disease from occupational or institutional exposure." This aligns with the FDA's booster authorization and makes these groups eligible for a booster shot. On the same day, the Advisory Committee on Immunizations also announced that it had only reviewed the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine, and they will address the same, with the same sense of urgency, the Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna vaccines. So, and that'll probably happen by the end of this month. So what this recommendation means is that people 65 years and older and residents in long-term care settings should receive a booster shot if they received their primary series of Pfizer. And that series should have been completed six months ago. So it's recommended six months after. People aged 50 to 64 with underlying medical conditions should also receive this booster. And people aged 18 to 49 may receive the booster based on their individual benefits and risks, as reviewed with their primary care physician. People aged 18 to 64 who are at increased risk of COVID-19 exposure and transmission because of occupational or institutional setting may receive a booster of the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine. I've been questioned by numerous people who got the Moderna vaccine if they should get a Pfizer booster, and I think the answer to that question is no. Be patient and wait for the data on the Moderna to come out, which should be out by the end of the month. And there is some evidence to suggest that the Moderna vaccine actually gives longer-lasting protection than the Pfizer vaccine. And the data on the Johnson &amp; Johnson will also follow shortly. Also in the news, on Saturday, the Governor announced a mandate for vaccine for all students of schools in the state of California. This mandate follows the same mandate for all other vaccines, such as measles, mumps, polio, rubella, diptheria, proctus, tetanus. So what this means... So what this means is that we are the first state to mandate the vaccine for COVID-19, and it's likely that other states will follow suit in the coming weeks. This may be in effect as early as January of 2022. Wanted to speak about how schools are doing. We have had numerous cases in our schools in Lake County of COVID-19 infection. Fortunately, because of the masking mandate and because of California's higher vaccination rates, we have not had to close many schools. Nationally, there's been 2,000 schools that have closed, and in the state of California, only 12 have closed, and we've had none close in Lake County. I think we should give ourselves a pat on the back for this, and I think it's due to the masking mandate, the vaccinations, the attention to proper hygiene, and the hard work of the staff in those districts serving our kids. The state of California also has a modified quarantine to keep children in school when they've been exposed to an active case. And the way this works is that when an unvaccinated student is exposed to an active case, they can still come to school if they are asymptomatic, they are tested twice weekly, they wear the proper mask, and they continue to quarantine for all extracurricular activities. We've been doing this in Lake County, and it seems to be working. We're not seeing an increased rate of infection, which is good news. Some other information in the news is regard to a new drug that Merck has asked for for emergency approval, and that drug is an oral medication. We don't have any oral medications currently. We have remdesivir, which is an IV medication. It's thought that this drug would reduce mortality by 50% and decrease hospitalization. I don't know anything more about it yet, and I'm sure those studies will be released soon. But again, it's hopeful information, and there are other drug companies that also have drugs in the pipeline to treat this disease. So that's encouraging news. So as we muddle through our way through this pandemic, the one item we can count on, I think, is change. Everything changes with new data, and we don't know where we're going exactly or how we're going to get to the end of this. But the information we currently have certainly does help us reduce and manage our risk. We've talked about masking and the importance of proper masking and quality masking in terms of seal with N95 masks. And I think as we move into the winter months, and we probably will see another surge, and if indeed we do, you know, I think it's all the more important that we be fully vaccinated. I think that the Delta virus is out there and active in the community. It's clear that the Delta virus, that if you're not vaccinated, it will find you, and it will eventually infect you. It's a much easier way, there is a much easier way to get your antibodies than through infection, and that is through vaccination. The Delta virus will make you sick, and many will become critically ill, and some will die. With regard to the vaccine, you'll get some myalgias, you might have some chills, you might get a sore arm, but you won't become critically ill, and you won't die. I think we are very fortunate in this country to have these resources available to us. I know there's a lot of discussion and acrimony over vaccinations. I encourage you all to discuss this with your family members who have not been vaccinated to mitigate their risk, to mitigate your risk, and to help all of you in your extended family. Lastly, I wanted to put in a plug for the flu vaccine. The flu vaccine is now available. It can be given with the COVID vaccine. It's available in pharmacies, and all the hospital staffs are beginning to vaccinate their people with it. I encourage you to talk to your primary care physician and ask when the best time is for you to get your flu vaccine. So once again, I want to thank you for inviting me to speak to you today, and I hope I see you on a live Zoom call in a couple of weeks so I'll be able to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein, as I'm sure that you were involved in helping with putting that together. Appreciate you playing the video for us. It's unfortunate that if we do have any questions, we have nobody to really respond at this moment in time, but opening it up for the board members if you do have any comments to make. Okay? I did want to, I hate doing this, but I felt there would need to be a correction. There was a comment about the vaccine, that you won't get critically sick and won't die. It's much less likely, I think is the better term to use, to get sick, because we do know that it's not 100%. And so I just wanted to make that slight correction because that's something that I'm sure everybody heard, and I'm sure that was just a misspeak, because we all know that there are, it's in the high 90s or mid 90s as far as the protection that we are seeing, and as far as the data that I'm receiving as well from the hospitals as well. But it's definitely not a 100%. And any way to decrease the impact to our community, I think, is a great way to go, move forward. I recommend, and I am in support of getting vaccinated, but I'm also in support that it is your choice, but please help us keep our community safe by practicing social distancing, wear masks when indoors amongst other people in the public, doing everything that we can on all ends to make sure that we can keep getting through this. And unfortunately, we're not seeing entirely the light at the end of the tunnel, but we are, at this moment in time, with this surge decreasing quite dramatically. I believe right now we're at 6.2% positivity rate, and this is as of yesterday's data that was posted this morning. And I believe we are at 17 cases per 100,000 now, and so that is definitely a great progress in moving towards a better, more safe environment at this moment in time. And with that, I would like to open it up to the public. If there's any public comments from the Zoom room or the boardroom, please come on up to the microphone, give us your name, and you have three minutes. Again, if you're in the Zoom room, press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or dial *9 if you're calling via telephone, and we'll call on you.
I am Joan Moss. In the Wall Street Journal on Sunday, I read an article about a pill. And there is a pill coming out where people who've had COVID for a couple of days can take the pill and avoid hospitalization. This was in the Wall Street Journal. It is not a conspiracy theory. A friend heard it on the public radio early this morning about this pill. People without vaccines who get sick can take this pill, and it will keep them from getting so sick that they go into the hospital. I would like Dr. Evans to answer that question, since it was in the Wall Street Journal, and it was publicized in national public radio early, early this morning by a friend of mine. So I want the facts. Thank you. Dr. Pace, maybe he can answer it.
Just to let you know, it was in the video. It was discussed in the video. It is trying, the makers of the pill and the medication is working through the FDA to get emergency approval. He did say-
It was in the report. I could not understand the report.
It was a little difficult. I will, I will agree with you on that.
I even forgot my hearing aids, but his lips weren't coordinated with his words. Where is he located? Is he located in Lake County?
This was a pre-recorded video, not a live video.
Okay. I wish there were questions and answers the way there is usually.
I agree with you.
I'm glad it was mentioned. I didn't hear that in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no hands up in the board chambers and none in the Zoom room, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. Any further comments before we move on? And seeing none, thank you, Dr. Evans, for your efforts, and we look forward to seeing you live. Let's move on to, let me get my agenda back up. Item 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designated the Month of October 2021 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Lake County, and Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, the proclamation is designated the month of October 2021 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas pregnancy and infant loss is more common than we realize, it is estimated in the United States that 1 in 4 pregnancies ends in miscarriage, 1 in 72 pregnancies ends in stillbirth, and 1 in 200 infants die before their first birthday. And whereas many Lake County parents and families have suffered a miscarriage, a stillbirth, or the death of an infant during delivery or shortly after birth, and such a terrible loss is not often recognized. And whereas, Lake County wishes to acknowledge the profound grief experienced by families who suffer the death of a small child, infant, or preterm baby. And whereas, even the shortest lives are still valuable, and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives is significant. And whereas, the 15th Day of October is recognized in the United States and around the world as a day of remembrance and awareness of pregnancy and infant loss, where in honor, when supporters honor these losses by lighting a candle at 7:00 PM. And whereas, increased awareness and the causes and impacts surrounding pregnancy and infant loss may lead to greater understanding, support, and resources in communities across Lake County. And whereas, recognizing Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month and Remembrance Day would enable the people of Lake County to consider how, as individuals and communities, they can meet the needs of bereaved mothers, fathers, and family members, and work to prevent the causes of these deaths. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Lake County, California, and encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to become educated in opportunities to prevent pregnancy and infant loss, and support bereaved families when prevention is not possible. Passed and adopted this 5th Day of October 2021. So the loss of a pregnancy or infant is really difficult to talk about, and it leaves families feeling isolated and alone when they're grieving and trying to come to terms with, with really what they've just been through. So the more that we can talk about it openly, it brings it into the light, and it normalizes this really uncomfortable and difficult part of life. So this is really personal for me. I've been there, and I wanted to bring this forward so that we could talk about the resources that we have in Lake County and perhaps how we can do better. And I think we have a few people that are joining us in the Zoom room.
Yes, Supervisor Pyska, we have Emily Fienen, we have Elizabeth Anderson. Behavioral Health is also here. I don't know if they intended to speak. And another speaker that we invited in is Jamie White, but I don't believe she has come in yet. Emily has her camera on now, and Elizabeth is in as a panelist, but no camera yet.
And do any of you have any comments to make in addition to the proclamation?
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Anderson, and I'm the Executive Director with Motherwise in Lake County. I just wanted to mention a couple of those resources that Supervisor Pyska was bringing forward. And in Lake County here, we do have the Motherwise program. We can offer family support through a variety of situations, but pregnancy and early infant loss is one that we can definitely help with. If folks are interested in getting in touch with the program, our phone number here is We also have Hospice of Lake County. They do fantastic work with families experiencing loss. And nationally, we have Postpartum Support International and a number of other agencies that can help as well. So if folks reach out to Motherwise, we can point them in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Emily Fienen, Senior Public Health Nurse and SIDS Coordinator for Lake County Public Health. As Supervisor Pyska mentioned, you know, talking about loss of a pregnancy or of an infant and child can be difficult, so I'm really grateful for this proclamation and raising awareness around this topic. The loss of a baby takes a devastating toll on parents, families, and communities. And Lake County Public Health collaborates closely with the Coroner's Office to provide services to families that have lost a child under the age of 18 months, regardless of the cause of death. As the SIDS Coordinator for Lake County Public Health, I do go out and provide bereavement support to families that have lost an infant to presume SIDS, sudden infant death, or other causes. When a family loses a child, I attempt to make contact with the family to establish a time to drop off what we call a keepsake box and assess the family's needs for services. Support services can include assessment of the family, crisis intervention and linkage to services, referrals to community supports. Like Elizabeth mentioned, hospice bereavement services has been one of the main resources I refer families to, and I offer ongoing public health nurse visits based on the individual family preference. You know, the loss of an infant is something that no parent should have to experience, so there are resources available. And if someone you know or you have lost an infant, please call Public Health to see what services are available, and that phone number is 707-263-1090. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jamie?
I just wanted to thank Jessica again for bringing this to the board. This is a very important event for a lot of our parents that are affected in this community, and we will be sending out a flyer to honor October 15 at 7:00, and we are going to encourage everyone to participate in lighting the candle. It's been really successful as a Zoom event, and we're also encouraging everybody who feels comfortable, it can be anonymous or not, to share their story, because sometimes your story can be the difference for somebody else who is going through something that they just needed to hear it, or they just need somebody to listen to or even talk to. So we're trying to break that silence, and, you know, with all the support that we have here in this community, it's really important that everybody is able to utilize all of that. So thank you, guys, for recognizing this, and let everyone know we are here and reach out to all the resources that we have available.
Thank you very much. I see Director Metkow is with us as well, wondering if he has any comments on this.
I can't really add anymore to what's already been said. You know, we work closely with Motherwise and Hospice and these other agencies, and I just, I'm honored to be a part of this conversation, and I'm glad that they have spoken up, because this is, this is a, this is a big issue, and I'm glad we're recognizing it, because I don't recall this ever being recognized in the past with a proclamation. So I'm happy to see it. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Supervisor Pyska, for bringing this to our attention. Very sensitive and difficult subject, for sure, and knowing that you have the support and that you're not alone is definitely one of those ways to help out. Any final comments before we open it up for the public?
No.
All right, opening up for the public, any comments on this item? Please come up to the microphone, three minutes, give us your name.
Joan Moss. I think there is a word that is left out of this conversation, and it's called abortion. I'd like to know how many abortions occur in Lake County and if there's help for people considering an abortion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's a different topic, carries similarities, but definitely a different topic. And at this moment, I don't know that we're prepared to respond to that question. And so seeing no further hands up, let's go ahead and move on.
Yeah, I want to thank all of you for participating today. You know, this is something that we need to talk about. When, when I've gone through these experiences, I felt very alone, and I had no idea how common it was. And so once you start talking about it, you find family members, you find friends, and you find people that you can talk to. So it's important to keep this conversation going.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So our next item, uh, we're going to, um, I'm going to look at the Fire Chiefs. If you can give us an extra five to 10 minutes, we need to go to item 7.4, as it's related in some way to the same staff that we already had here, and then we'll get to your 6.4 item. And so we're going to jump over to 7.4, Consideration to Approve Staff Recommendation to Apply for Grant Funding from the National Association of County and City Health Officials. And I will pass this on to... Says Health Services, help me out, CAO Hutchinson.
I agendized this, Mr. Chair, if you would pass it on to me, and I believe that Carolyn Holiday is in the Zoom room and will help me speak to this issue. In, in support of the Health Department, I placed this item on the agenda, um, for the Health Department to assist them in getting your board's support to apply for the NACO grant, National Association of County and City Health Officials, in the amount of $450,000. The due date for that submittal is October 13th, and I yield to Carolyn Holiday to tell you what this grant is all about.
Good morning, Board. I appreciate having the opportunity to have this before you and to speak on it. This opportunity came up very short dated. It's essentially up to $450,000 that would support SAFE RX in doing the work that it currently is already doing. Uh, so essentially, we wouldn't have to pick up any new staff, um, or provide any new activities. We could continue to do what we're doing and expand what we're doing, uh, with that extra $450,000, up to $450,000. It should be noted that, um, that influx of money would allow us to cover some of our staff time, but it would also allow us to cover, um, portions of items that are usually paid for by Hope Rising. Uh, and so our hope is that if we're allowed to go after this funding, that it will support both our department and Hope Rising when it comes to opioid reduction.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from CAO Hutchinson before we open it up for the board?
No, sir.
Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Scott?
Um, just that this item came to Hope Rising, and we, they have the support of Hope Rising to move forward, because SAFE RX, um, is on the umbrella of Hope Rising, so, um, this is work we are already doing, work that is important to continue in our community, so I definitely support this, um, application.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Definitely have heard, uh, and seen many great things coming from SAFE RX, so absolutely happy to see us supporting this grant process. I see Director Metcalf just jumped on, did you had a comment, have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to follow up on Supervisor Scott's, uh, comment, um, because I too, I sit on the Hope Rising Governing Board, and so I, I also want to offer our support, because this, this also complements the work that we do at, uh, Behavioral Health Services. So, uh, this is very exciting, and hoping that Health Services gets it.
All right, thank you very much. There's no further comments, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? And seeing none in the boardroom, and none in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, um, Stock's recommendation to apply for grant funding from the National Association of County and City Health Officials.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you to the Chiefs' patience. Let's go back to item 6.4, 9:40 AM item, Presentation by North Shore Fire Regarding Their Fire Fuels Crew Project.
All right.
And if you'd like, you can sit down in one of the seats up front, that way you can remain while we have the, the question and answer portion as well.
And Mr. Chair, the Chief has brought a PowerPoint presentation that I think Matthew is ready to queue up when the Chief wishes him to do that.
Okay. And so I'll, uh, go ahead and introduce this. Chief and I, and I think it was the Chair from, uh, Habemutl have met, I think it was back in April or May, we were discussing some of this, and, uh, Chief is looking for, um, some other ways to combat the fuels that we have. Um, at, at certain times, we used to have jail crews, we used to have other agencies that were allowed to do volunteers and things of that nature, but for whatever reason, we don't have those resources any longer. And so, um, we met, discussed some budgetary items, and I think the Chief is going to go ahead and, uh, bring forward everything that we've discussed in that in a, in a more organized manner, but, uh, just wanted to say this is a very good idea, and, uh, thank you Chief for bringing it forward. So, uh, Chairman Sabatier and Supervisors, thank you for letting me, uh, present this. And, uh, so as Supervisor Crandall said, this was a, just was a brainstorming thing that started that, uh, once the ball started rolling, it's rolling quite quickly. Um, so we decided that we needed to have a fire, uh, a fuels crew to help with the reduction of fuels around the county, not only in my district, but around the entire county. So we can go to the next slide here, and I'll start from there.
It should be coming.
Okay.
There it is.
Yeah, so, so we started talking about it, um, with that, and also my two board members that are in the back, uh, Shannon Stillwell and John Barnett, also helping me, uh, walk through this process, and we decided that we needed to develop a fuels crew. Um, and, uh, some of the impacts it may or may not have. Fuels crew, it obviously will clear the brush, we're seeing less and less of those crews available. Um, as a matter of fact, we don't even get a response of a hand crew or of any type on a wildland fire anymore. It has to be requested, and it has to be approved, uh, because of the lack of resources throughout the state. Um, so developing this crew, we can do prescribed burns appropriate and throughout the county. The crew, the, the number two bullet there really is the, one of the most important ones for the, uh, fire districts as a whole, because right now, what happens is our fire crews stay on the scene till the fire's entirely mopped up, till it's out 100%. Well, that means that someone, uh, the next emergency is not being taken care of. So if we develop this crew, um, they can also respond to these fires, take the place of those EMS firefighter positions, put them back in the stations for the next emergency, and, uh, still, we can get the fire mopped up. Uh, and then the impact, another one the crew will do is fuel mitigation, oops, hit something there.
And escape.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, it will, they'll do projects, this is one we're still kind of working on, uh, but fuel mitigation projects, we know throughout the town halls that I attend, and Supervisor Crandall attend on the North Shore specifically, um, there is a, the theme is the same. I don't, I can't do the work, I'm too elderly, uh, where do I get this work done? How do I get it done? So we're trying to help out with that, and, uh, this seems to be, uh, how we can. Next slide. So as the ball started to get rolling, uh, we decided that we're kind of in the middle of a, of a grant season, so to speak. If I really wanted to get this crew off the ground, and I don't like waiting, um, we had to do something fairly fast. As you can see, uh, back to our brainstorming that happened in April and, and May, uh, with Supervisor Crandall and, uh, Ms. Trappas, Chairman Trappa from Habemutl, uh, we did a presentation, she called me back fairly quickly, within a week, and, uh, I made a formal presentation to their board on this, on my plan for this crew. They subsequently decided to fund the payroll and benefits, uh, for this, uh, plan. Now, the reason why, uh, this presentation is being made is because that is the budget for the fuels crew for one year. And what I had asked for is, I need funding for the first year, so that we can work on securing grant funding for multiple, uh, future years. Um, I'm running a model that's similar to North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District. They have a fuels crew of 65 people, that is 95% run by grants. The other 5% is a, is a private contract with Northern Nevada Utilities. Um, so it's doable, and it's possible. Um, but I need to get off the ground. If I waited to try to write those grants and then see if we get it and go from there, we're looking at 22, 23, uh, fiscal years, but before we can get started, in, in my opinion, that's just too far in the future. We need to get started now. Um, so we have the payroll and benefits portion of this crew funded. It's, it calls for one fire captain, crew supervisor, and 10 crew members. Um, they are going to be full-time employees of North Shore Fire Protection District, they will be benefited positions, um, they will be titled firefighters with less, lower a level of requirements training-wise, and we'll train them on the job, um, for the fuels crew. What I'm looking for today, you can see is the outstanding part there, is the equipment. My budget, my 91 budget, 911 budget, uh, does not have the ability to fund this crew, or the equipment, or the saws, the hand tools, and things like that, to run this crew. So that's what I'm looking for, and that's an estimate of that 473. And then some operating costs, we've actually, uh, I've made presentations to Robinson Rancerea, and PG&E, the Wine Alliance, things like that, to help with the operating costs, and, uh, see where we can go from that. They're all in consideration. I did have a good meeting with Robinson Rancerea about, uh, they have a fuels crew also, Tera, um, but maybe that, they also have a petroleum products there, so maybe the fuel and oils and things like that, that we'll need, um, can be, can be, uh, worked out some sort of arrangement there. So we've really, we've been searching everyone, and you're kind of one of the last to come forward and do that. Grant opportunities, so we recognized early on that this is not something I can do alone. Uh, when we ran our special measure, one of the ti, one of the things that we ran off of was, it takes a village. It's not just one person. So, um, we have developed partnerships with different people in, uh, Lake County, Clerk. Um, we've had meetings with them, um, they're really excited and looking forward to this, our partnership with them. Um, we've partnered with, uh, the RRA, I, I sit on that, and have attended most of that. Um, so I'm just looking to get the rest of the funding for this particular project, so that I can move forward. Um, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited that we actually got the funding for the payroll and benefits. I am going to hire the fire captain probably within the next month and a half, and, uh, go from there. And next slide.
Sorry, I forgot I was in charge of that.
So some of the requirements is establish a risk and hazard criteria for communities to determine priority parcels. So this is, this is kind of a big deal, is how do you do this? Um, there's been questions raised, will this crew only work on the North Shore, or will it work anywhere in the county? There's not enough grants on the North Shore to keep it funded full-time, so this crew's going to work wherever the work is, wherever the funding is, to, through grants or, or individuals, uh, throughout the county. And, um, but the, we need to establish the priorities, and we haven't done that. We've had some preliminary meetings, uh, the Fire Chiefs Association and Clerk are all, and, uh, are working on the CWPP and other things to determine what is the priority level? How do we prioritize projects? How do we get those things done? So that kind of work, that kind of discussion is going on in the background, um, as we speak, so that'll be our prioritization. Uh, and while I inherited being on the RRA board, when I took over as Chief, um, that has expanded. Now we have plenty of different organizations, Fire Safe Councils, the Firewise Communities, and things like that, that we're really involved with, and there seems to be a lot of energy, uh, from all of those different organizations for this type of program. Mitigation, understanding what is already being done by the CWPP. That CWPP probably is way more important than anyone realizes. Um, the one thing that, uh, Shannon, uh, Stillwell and I took out of, we went up and visited North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, every single grant that they write refers to the CWPP. We need to get that thing completed, and get it adopted, and, and use it, use it for future grant opportunities on a federal level. Um, they, they call that program out a lot. And then how can, how, and how the North Shore Fuels Crew can fulfill a role in the plan? So, so the one thing that we heard loud and clear early on was, uh, specifically from Clerk was, they have projects, but they're having trouble finding workers. They're having trouble finding crews. They're, they're already, they're booked, they can't get enough employees, or whatever. So they end up going outside. I want to develop a crew, I want to keep that money here locally, and so that we're not having to, uh, get crews from, you know, Sacramento, or even further out than that. I want to keep that money locally if we can. Um, and I'm not above deciding this is not only just a hand fuel crew, uh, group, uh, we want to, I want to start a chipping program, uh, on the North Shore, but wherever that's at, uh, we'll, we'll chip anywhere, and wherever the funding is available for that. Uh, the biomass removal, things, uh, may be a po, I know that, uh, the Big Valley, Scott's, uh, Big Valley is working on a biomass group, uh, so maybe there's some partnerships there that we can still tap into, I haven't even really discussed that with them directly yet. Um, and then the community, uh, developing the cooperation within community members, increasing awareness and education, provide defensible space assessments, home hardening is a big one, uh, and then training residents about the fuels crew, and how they can access these resources. Um, one thing that, uh, North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District did is they have an online, online form that you can fill out, and, uh, you bring it, and they fill it out, and, uh, the, the chipping crew there comes by, chips it, chips it back into the yard, and they go on to the next one. They do approximately, approximately 1,700 lots in a six-month period. So they're, they're very busy, in a 12 square mile area. Okay, next slide. So recruitment, so the first, the first hurdle is the funding, and we're getting there. Um, the second hurdle, as you all know, is going to be recruitment. Um, fuels crew, it's, they have to be a minimum age of 18, they have to meet the standards of my fire, the, the department policies, and then we will train them on the job. Um, I have, uh, staff inside the department that's working on strategies, but the graduating seniors that really don't know what they want to do, um, is a good place to start. Um, the community colleges, believe it or not, Santa Rosa Memorial, uh, Santa Rosa Community College, uh, they actually have fuel crew classes at their college now. How to, how to be prepared to get a fuels crew job. Um, you know, uh, tribal communities, I'm not opposed to any of those, and then utilizing a hiring agency if we have to. Um, we're going to look high and low for employees that want to be. Um, the one thing that, uh, under the training and development that is on there is, once they are a member of the North Shore, they open up to a lot more training that we offer. Um, I offer paramedic training, I'll pay for it, um, and then they, I threw it with our department, they can get other training to maybe transition over to the 911 side of the fire department. Uh, so I'm going to skip to bullet number two, the knowledge transfer with North Lake Tahoe Fire District with the site training and onboard opportunities. Early on in this, I reached out to our Lake County representative at PG&E, Donovan Lee, and, uh, he may, got me in touch with a gentleman, a friend of his, by the name of, uh, he's a division chief with North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, Isaac Powney. Um, they are kind of the model for the nation and their crew. Their crew's been around for 25 years, they do it very well. Um, so Shannon and I, as I indicated earlier, we went up there and visited with them for a whole day. They gave us a bunch of information. They have offered to come here and help us, uh, onsite train, and And then they have also offered and do on a regular basis invite crews to come shadow their crews so that you get an idea of how to do it. So I intend on taking advantage of those situations and opportunities with the North Lake Tahoe Fire District and getting our crew up and running as quickly as we can so that we can be working by next summer. Specialized training for fuel mitigation projects, established program details. So this crew is dedicated to fuel reduction and education. So, you know, they will be doing training. They will learn how to provide help, assistance with prescribed burns, home hardening, how to give in presentations to the community as needed and how to, how to harden the home. Ongoing training with the fuels crew requests, some goals. My board has been very good about giving me, you need to have a one-year plan, three-year plan, five-year plan. My hope is by year two that they're responding within the county to wildland fire emergencies as a, as a crew, a hand crew, and can help out, assist with the mop-up and, and things of, on our calls. Down the line further, maybe we can get them certified as a crew, increase the staff a little bit and then get them certified as a regular hand crew and can respond to emergencies outside of the county. But that's down the road, but it's good to have some goals. Okay. So lastly, here's our, our roadblocks is the initial development costs and funding. I've talked much about that, and that's kind of what I'm looking for. Maybe hopefully some support today is that funding. Once we're over that hurdle, I have to, I really have to do that recruitment side. That'll be my next hurdle, as I said. Lack of awareness and understanding within the county. I've put this presentation on several times now and still people, some don't understand what it is or what we can do, and we need to educate and do a little bit better job of that. Incapable of finding qualified crew members and represents the North Shore Fire Protection in a professional manner on and off the line. Yeah, as we know, hiring is hard right now for any job, and I don't think that this is going to be any different. But I believe that, I believe that there are kids out there. That's why we're going to kind of center on high school seniors that are graduating that don't really know yet. But let's give them some skills and let's try to see if the, if the fire service is something they're interested in. So that's kind of my presentation. I cut it down because it could be rather long, but and I think the sustainability is the failure, the last one there I see it come back up, is the failure. If we, you know, I'm going to rely on grant funding. I don't have the funds within my own 911 budget, as I put it, to support this program long-term. And the partnerships like with Clerk and others are going to be very, very important for sustaining the crew after year one. So that's my presentation. And I'll be happy, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief Ciancio, for your presentation. Supervisor Crandall, would you like to make some final comments before we open it up?
Yes, Chief, thank you for going over that. And I just wanted to highlight that one of the, one of the discussions that, or topics of discussion that Chief mentioned was having, having someone to mop up while we're attending another emergency. Back in, I think it was July, Nice had a, had a fire. And then there was one in Clear Lake Oaks right afterwards. And so that's, that's a typical situation. What happened Sunday, same thing, there could have been something else that happened, and then we need someone to fill the shoes of that. And so I appreciate the fact that it's countywide. Another thing I really appreciate is the fact that you're targeting the 18-year-olds. There are a lot of kids that come out of school that aren't ready for college or don't want to go to college and need jobs. And so it's, it's just good to see other options out there. I'm prepared to provide some of my discretionary funds. I know I just spent some last week, but this serves a lot of purposes. This serves, you know, the fact that we're, this is, this is crisis when it comes to fires. One of the many crises we're dealing with. So I'm prepared to, to help in any way I can. I only have a specific amount, but I know that I seen, you said the outstanding funds is 521-779. So I, you know, I, I spent, I think it was $50,000 last year. And of course I assigned, pretty much assigns another 40-something thousand for the next year. So I think, I think I can cover some of, some of the, from the 73 to the 100,000. And I'm prepared to, to apply some of that. But also I know that one of the topics that we discussed is we would like to see if there's another way we can apply this towards some of the funding that's in the percentage for the cannabis funds as well. So just wanted to highlight that and, you know.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
I am so excited about this project. This is what we have worked, been working for, working towards with the Risk Reduction Authority and, and before that with the Cockberry Council. I've, I've spent every day since the valley fire six years ago working on building this capacity in our county to, to manage the vegetation that we have. And, and I don't know if anyone's been looking around, but, but we already had a problem with, with vegetation in our, in our county. But, but this summer with the drought and the heat, we've lost thousands of trees and our, our forests are, are being decimated today. So this is not a, this, this is not a problem that we can ever put on the back burner. We have to continually work towards, to managing what we have to keep our communities safe. So we've been setting the goal to build capacity in our county to get this work done. But Chief Ciancio is correct, we do not have the crew, the crews to do the work that needs to be done. And so I'm really excited. I know that this, that your focus is the North Shore, but let's be honest, the North Shore is a huge part of our county to begin with. But I know that you're going to be working with Clerk and everybody else to address the priorities that are, are in our CWPP and, and are in our CMAT. And we're having our Risk Reduction Quarterly Meeting or Update right after this, a little bit later today. So you're going to hear about all this work that we've been doing. And this is, this is so exciting to have one of the projects finally come forward. So I support this wholeheartedly. You know, this is, I hope just the beginning of, of this type of work that we can do collaboratively and cooperatively in our county.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
You know, you made a very good point. We, we heard this presentation at the Risk Reduction Authority, and obviously we understood the importance. And I know we did a support letter that was put in on one of the grants to, to help this move forward. So just as Jessica said, the collaboration and coordination to get projects started and boots on the ground, I think is, you know, the most important and critical thing. You made a statement earlier about the CWPP that a lot of folks don't understand how important that is. But we clearly do here at the board level and the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority and the Fire Chiefs, how important that document is for us moving forward. And we're at a critical point of trying to get that completed now here as soon as possible. We have RCD working on that to get that updated, and it's starting to be circulated. So we clearly understand that and look at that as being, as you said, the roadmap to the future on how we're making the real impacts here in Lake County. The other thing that I am excited about on this project, as we said, and we looked at this tragedies, there's always opportunities that come out of that. And I think one of the things, building a new economy, this fire crew is an opportunity for young folks, for job opportunities, for training, just as you had said. And I think we really need to grow on that because this is going to be a part of our lives for the next, well, the rest of our lives, but for sure, the next 20 years on vegetation abatement, climate change, how it's affecting the world. And this is an opportunity. I, I know we talk about higher education and other things throughout Lake County, but as Supervisor Crandall said, there are a lot of folks who are just workers. They want to get up in the morning, they want to go to work and see something done at the end of the day, and they're not going to go to college. And I think this is an important way to get those folks that are looking for direction for opportunities in a new economy in Lake County. So I am excited about the project also. There are some projects that I would love to see this crew in South Lake County. You know, we have some serious issue with vegetation growing throughout the creeks that go by both Middletown and Hidden Valley. There are plenty of other projects that need be done too. So, you know, like I said, I'm excited about the opportunity and the conversation we're having today. So there is one other coordination opportunity. We have the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. I've asked them, Bruce Wilson, to come to our October 18th meeting. That is a JPA that we set as a county for job creation, job training, education, and other things. So I'm hoping we can tie this together with the long-term relationship with that JPA that we also have with, that, that myself and Jessica Pyska set on. And hopefully we can get some of those training dollars and other things in the future, at least talked about to be funneled through this program. At least that's initial conversations we'd like to have. But I too support this opportunity and this program. I know that there is another work crew out there, the Eco Restoration, the TARA program that's being run. So this is just a collaboration effort that will just help us increase these things as we all get those calls, whatever district we're in or area of project that needs to be done. Once the CWPP is completed and we can look at these things and focus over the next few years will really help us make an impact. I, I myself too, like Supervisor Crandall said, and I haven't asked CAO if that's an opportunity. I know that as a board member, I have some, some funds that can be used in my district or I'm hoping it can be used all over the county if I decide for that. But out of my discretionary funds, I'm, I'm prepared also to put in on this project throughout with those dollars. So, and I know, I think the starting balance is about $200,000 that we have for each district. And I'd be willing out of those funds, I got some projects I got to get done in my district. I can't do all of them, but to start with, I know I would be willing to put in $100,000 towards the opportunity to get this going. So that was a 50-50 split. But, you know, you know, we want to make sure it's countywide. I know you said that to start with. So I think the impact it can have, that's how much I believe in it. And like I said, I do have some other projects, so I got to keep at least 50% on some things I got to get done this year. But I would be willing to step up and work that out with CAO to put my funds of $100,000 towards this project to get it started. One other thing too, and I think we've had offline conversations and wearing our other hat. I think the coordination, as you said, collaboration. I just really want to thank the Benetton Tribe for stepping up, you know, and what they've done so far and committed. Just, you know, another great thing that, that government is doing here for Lake County residents. But continue those conversations and collaborations. We've got a brand-new chipper, a big old bandage, I think it's a bandage chipper. We paid about $50,000 in our organization from the tribal side that could, could do some real help. So we coordinate with that. We'd be, I know we'd be willing to talk about a partnership to volunteer in that machine to be used also for some of that chipping stuff. So maybe that can help on some of the costs to begin with. So anyway, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate the presentation.
Supervisor Scott?
Well, I definitely support this program. It's definitely needed in our community. I guess my question would be, when do we believe our CWPP will be completed? Because I know you're saying we need that completed to be able to go to receive more grant funding.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're pretty close. The first presentation is actually going to be made to the Fire Chiefs. We've been in, in contact with Linda Juttenin to do that. And so she's pretty close. They haven't actually given us a date, but I kind of pushed last meeting last month and said, when are we going to see this? I don't think it'll be too far out. Harry Lyons is kind of coordinating that one. So I believe that it, it'll be before the first of the year for sure.
And then I don't, I don't know if there was funding already set aside or we've spoken about this, but can we maybe convene a cannabis funding meeting and go back and, and look at that and see if we can't come up with the rest of the money? I've already allocated my funds. I'm looking to do creek cleaning. So kind of on the same set, just looking to clean out the creeks. I was kind of hoping one of the fires would go through and take out the brush in the creeks, but we haven't been so lucky. How that happened. But I, I would love to convene the cannabis committee and, and see if we can't come back with the rest of the funds needed to finish this project.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the CWPP. It is due any minute. We're all anxiously waiting. But our Civic Spark Laurel Bard last year did mapping of several of the priority areas. So they've already, they're already there. It's, it's just, you know, having it in the official report where the chiefs are going to take a look at that and determine what the priorities are. But the work that Clerk has, has mapped out, has identified, has funding for, does not have the crew for. So that's really where the capacity comes in. It's so, so important. And I would love to have the cannabis committee take a look at filling in the gap, and then I would love to put in 50,000 too.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. This is something that I think we've all worked on individually to try and protect our communities. I know that there was some great collaboration done over in the east side of Clear Lake between BLM, Cal Fire, our local districts, and Clerk. Actually Clerk, I would say, saved the day by providing the SEQA that we needed to be able to get it all done. It's unfortunate, the process that is required to do some of the work that needs to be done, whether it's clearing vegetation or control burns. There's still a pretty intense bureaucratic process to go through. And so I really hope that people, agencies like Clerk can join in to help us prepare those things and help move forward faster. Right now we're talking about the crew, but it's going to take some, some actual green lights for us to get those things approved for the crew to work on. That to me is, is just as important as the crew or else we have a crew and we can't do the work or we're cleaning up after the fact. We all know fires, it's so much more than just a fire. The trauma it causes our community, the displacement of our communities, we have to figure out ways to mitigate and minimize the impacts. We're never going to stop fires, but it's the idea of not letting them grow into 10,000 acres, into 100,000 acres. And so it, it was sad for me for the Cache Fire. It's one of the areas we did not clean up this year. We did almost everything around except for that one area. And so it's just, it's, it's, fire finds a place. It's about mitigating, mitigating and minimizing the actual impacts of the fires. This needs to be county. I'm glad that even though it's titled North Shore, you're already speaking of the county. And I am going to echo some of the sentiments that were shared by Supervisor Simon. I'm hoping that this is a pilot program to something larger in the long run. I don't see how this will prove unsuccessful. This is absolutely necessary. But to have a North Shore Fire Crew and having a South Shore Fire Crew that takes care of all around the county and working together based on where the need is, I think is the way to go. It's already been mentioned, I, I know that we have $9 million right now in reserves, not, not accounting for the, I lost the term, for the money set aside. We had 3.2 million dollars for retention or whatever it was called. I forget that exact category.
Workforce retention or?
Workforce retention. So we still have $9 million set aside, in my opinion. That's, that's what we need to look at. And so absolutely, let's have that, the cannabis committee take a look at it and bring it back to the board, see what's possible. Because I, in my opinion, this is on our vision 2028, on how to better protect our environment. The, the funding that was provided to us as individuals was for projects within the community. This crosses all boundaries, all borders, and is something that we should be doing. And I'm glad that it's being, we're being approached with this offer, and I think we need to take the offer. So I'm, I'm all in favor for bringing this back on how it's going to get funded. I think it's absolutely 100% possible to fund it. I, I, I almost want to offer that we need to look at two different ways, a one-year and a two-year funding, just for the fact that we want to make sure as we complete the CWPP that that gets completed in time so that you can request the right appropriate grants and continuously do what you've already done, which has been fabulous as far as asking for other agencies and businesses around the lake to help support this. I think that we can get there and we will get there.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the, the multi-year plan. The strategic planning of this project is obviously very important, and we've talked about this before. What the Risk Reduction Authority is doing, which we'll speak about in a little bit, is we have a best fits grant meeting. Is it once a month now or is it every, it's every two weeks? So that's where all the nonprofits and agencies come together, sit at the table, look at all the grants that are available, figure out who should apply for which one, who can supply letters of support. And, and that's the first avenue for the strategic planning for the funding. And then we can, can work to backfill whatever isn't funded. But this is going after PG&E grants, Fire Safe Council grants from the But this is going after PG&E grants, Fire Safe Council grants from the state. These are really big pots of money that are really important, and it's important for us to support all of the agencies that are going through that process.
Absolutely. So thank you again, and I'm certain that we will come back and find some way to make this happen and make this possible. If there's no further comments, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Chief, please, you can start the public comment. And actually, let me change that. We are not starting public comment. You have more than three minutes, you can speak.
I'll keep it short.
I don't want to limit you.
No, we collectively, as the Fire Chiefs Association, individual fire chiefs, to include Forest Service and Cal Fire, BLM, totally hats off to Mike for moving forward with this. You know, over my 10 years chief, we've lost over 50% of our county landmass, 3,200 structures. And it's amazing that we have, sit back in time, our biggest fires in Lake County were the Menon Hall complex in 1986 and the Forks fire in 1996 of over 80,000 acres. You know, through that time, we're seeing those devastating fires that are 10, 20, 30, up to 100,000 acres, the LNU, the MEU. And, you know, the severity of where our fuels are, are year-round now. Our fire season doesn't close. And then we support Mike 100% on this and we think it's a great idea. And there are, when we look at vetting these projects, is the critical infrastructure, the economic impact, the environmental impact. And, and those critical infrastructures are, each of us as fire chiefs have critical communities, whether it be Noble Ranch, whether it be Spring Valley, whether it be Robinson area, those are all areas that are just waiting for a coffee park. And so in 41 years of serving this county, the fire growth is just, just grown to unproportions. So we're seeing fires that are burning 6,000 to 10,000 acres in an hour. And so we need to get in and do these fuel reductions. And like I said, working with Mike, this being a countywide project, legitimately, operationally, we're, we're there to support him. You know, I think that it's nice to have a new, fresh chief that has a little bit better outlook on the big picture. And the hats off to you, Mike, this is fantastic, and for the board to, to support that. If we don't, we're going to have another coffee park and we're gonna have those fires continue. As you talked about the cash fire, that was one of the, the fires that within, within three minutes, went from a quarter acre to three acres, 20 mile an hour winds. And before I knew it, I lost 64 structures within my district. Astronomical, and we had no casualties out of that. And that is going to continue unless we do these fuel reduction projects. And what I liked about Mike's project is that it's not just a one-time, it's sustainable. If we look at our shaded fuel breaks along 281, so do A, those were done, but there wasn't sustainability to make sure we maintain those shaded fuel breaks. And so I think that with some of the issues and some of the things we've done with local abatement, administrative penalties, is that a good majority of our property owners are absentee property owners, and they don't realize the impact that their properties, even though we've done everything to try to get them to abate them, working with Mike and those other groups to get these areas mitigated, to protect and have sensible spaces there. So and that's it. I appreciate your support, Mike. Awesome job, dude, really. It, it is awesome to work with a group of fire chiefs that I work with, Joe and Paul, and, and of course Jeff, the new fire chief, the new kid on the block, and of course Mike's. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment in the boardroom? And then I see that we have Laura, Laurel Bard. Let's go ahead and unmute her. And please provide your name.
Hello, this is Laurel Bard from Clear Lake Environmental Research Center speaking. I just wanted to thank Chief Seansio for giving the, an excellent presentation. As everyone else has said, this is incredibly relevant work, especially when it comes to implementing projects that are in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And Clear Lake Environmental Research Center is fully committed to identifying projects, conducting community outreach, and passing those projects along to the fuels crew, as well as conducting the necessary environmental review to make sure that we're doing all of this in an ecologically sustainable way. Just, yeah, I just really wanted to offer my support and say that I'm really excited that this program is happening, and we look forward to working with you, Chief Seansio.
Thank you very much for your comment. And I see no further hands up in the Zoom room. And no one getting up to speak here in the boardroom, so bring it back to the board. Any further comments? I, I did want to make one comment I forgot to make is, I, I know in the past, I've seen a lot of work, whether it's through construction programs. I believe there was an EMT program over at Carlay High School. I don't know if EMT is the right term for that, but it was something along those lines. And I think that those schools are, are good candidates for finding some of that workforce. I know at Locunoma possibly. And so just putting it out there, I know those kids are, are looking to get involved in something. The schools are trying to get them involved in those types of things. And so I think that that might be a good place as well to find some of those candidates.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm open to all the strategies, because as I said, that'll be the next hurdle is really recruitment, for sure.
But thank you again for your presentation. As you can see, there, there's not much friction for getting that support. It came very easily. We're all looking forward to increasing the safety of our communities, and this sounds like this is right along those lines.
And I'd, I'd like to just thank you all for the support. And I kind of got the same feeling I got when I got the phone call from Hamon Toll and the other half of it. So it's moving fast, and I don't know that I anticipated it moving this fast, but we're, I'm willing to deal with it and get, get it going. I'd like to have boots on the ground by May of next year.
Awesome.
So that's my goal. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, and Chief, just thank you again. For me, it's important to get something like this going because, you know, we've been working, I was on the Risk Reduction Authority as well, and I know that there's a lot of hurdles we had to jump through, especially the pandemic, but also just waiting on the agencies to, to kind of conduct that oversight they needed with us. So that kind of hindered some of what we were trying to do. So putting something to action is commonly what we were looking for, you know, and so this, this does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So I see that our next item is set for 10:30 and set for 10 minutes. Is that truly the timeframe you guys are looking at? I'm just looking at the clock, whether we take a break or if we start.
10 minutes?
Okay, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. So we will reconvene at 10:53. We took a little bit longer, that was a 15-minute break, but it is 10:58 AM. Let's go ahead and reconvene our meeting, and we are going to move on to our 10:30 AM item. Consideration of Report from the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority. This was brought to you by Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Pyska, so handing it off to you.
Yeah. You know, obviously, just when we brought on NCO, we committed obviously to do our quarterly reports. And what I would like to say to NCO, I'd also like to say to our CEO, Carol Hutchinson, and also Jessica, thank you very much for being able to get this partnership together. Since NCO has come on board, we've really taken some steps and strides forward to, to move forward. And also to thank the board for the amendment that we did to add the extra seats to the Risk Reduction Authority. So today is our first report on the work that has been done. As you heard earlier, in the project we were talking about, the CWPP, is very important work that's being done and being reported out with the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority through RCD. And it really is in which, being educated on when I first joined the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, having that roadmap for the opportunity for success in fire prevention and risk reduction here in Lake County, especially through that document. So I'm excited about that. And today, we're gonna get a report from Tammy on the great work that's being done. But the collaboration, the once-a-month meetings and collaboration with all agencies being invited to the table in Lake County to really talk about where we're going in the future here is so important. There are conversations that happen all over. At our LAFCO meetings, there's constant conversation about, you know, fire flow and fire hydrants. And now we have the water purveyors at the table and looking at those roadmaps and opportunities coming, whether it's USDA, Fire Prevention, Fire Safe Council, California Fire Safe Council Grants, or other things that maybe give us opportunities to address many different issues on the fire side is very important. And as you know, the Lake County Risk Reduction is not only for fire prevention, that's what's at our front door right now with climate change. And also it is to address all risks in the county, which is floods, fire, earthquake, and other preparedness. And one other thing to add, pandemics, drought, you know, all the things that are coming up. But it puts all the folks at the table that are doing the work outside of the county, the nonprofit agencies, Fire Safe Councils, and other agencies in the county that are just focusing on making the lives safer or as safe as possible for our residents in Lake County to look at more funds to be brought in and also creating different opportunities on workforce, some of the conversation we just had. There are opportunities out there that we need to just keep building on. I'm excited about this month. We are going, yes, it is this month, flies by so fast, but I'll go, like I said, on October 18th, we'll have Bruce Wilson, the Executive Director of the Workforce Alliance of North Bay, to look at other opportunities, how we turn this into an educational and training program, sustainable in the county, to build a new workforce, as it's always talked about. When we talk about improving the education in Lake County, the education, you know, the degrees that are brought in here, there's still that workforce that, as we said, won't be going to colleges or other places. And this could be a great work opportunity that could start out as a hand crew, as you heard from the chief, could be working to EMT or a complete job, whether it's with a fire district here in the county or Cal Fire throughout the state, giving different opportunities for folks in that workforce that really isn't into the education process. But really want to get up in the morning, see work done, help their community, and see a project completed at the end of the day that just makes everybody safer. So that's really what I have to say. I'll turn it over to Jessica or Tammy, whatever. All right, we'll turn it right over to Tammy.
So as Mugg said, we entered into contract with NCO and?
If I can ask you to move the microphone a little closer to you to make sure everybody in the Zoom room can hear you?
Yes. Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay. So as Supervisor Sir Simon said, we entered into contract in July, and so I am here to do this first of hopefully many, we're poured out. A lot of it you've already heard today, so I'll be doing a lot of recapping. And I have a slideshow here.
If you don't mind using your mouse and clicking okay.
Okay.
You didn't know you were here for that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so back in February of 2021, the RRA met and had a retreat and came up with the following priorities. These were expanded when I got the list, because as I said, I was a part of the RRA, but I wasn't as involved until July. So I'm excited to note that all of the process, all of these are in process. Every single one of these points that were made or plans are at some point being accomplished or working on. So we'll all go into more detail on, in each of the future slides, but again, all of them are at some point of implementation. Next thing? Do I have to do it or? So who's at the table now? We of course have Chairman Simon and Supervisor Pyska, and then our, each of our fire districts. As they, as was just mentioned, there, we brought on some new directors, and we'll go into that with the next slide. But the members that are at the table that are reporting out monthly, there's just a list here, Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association, Clerk, Scotts Valley Band of Homo Indians, the Epicenter, Lake County CAN, which is the new climate movement, the Fire Safe Councils, the CRD, US Department of Forestry. All of these collaborations are just making the RRA what it is today. It's, I feel like the momentum, even since I've come on in July, is just moving forward. We did have Chief Seansio do a presentation, I believe it was in August. And then as Supervisor Simon said, that we will have Workforce North Bay Alliance with Bruce Wilson. He's on the agenda for this month. And also TARA, the Tribal Echo Restoration Alliance with Lindsay Daly. She is also on to do a presentation this month. And our meeting this month is on the 18th at 3:00 PM, and we'd love for all of you to join us. Next slide, please. So here's the new players at the table. These four entities have, since I've been on, joined the directors, and we're glad to have them. As I said, it's just a, we're pushing that rock uphill, and I feel like we're at the top of it, just ready to keep on going. Next slide, please. As Supervisor Pyska mentioned earlier, we have a best fits grant committee. As part of the Risk Reduction Authority, I saw that there were several entities that were gonna go for this grant back in July, and they were all saying, oh, I think I'm gonna go for this. I think I'm gonna, I'm like, wait a minute, we can have one applicant per the county, and there's only five that are gonna receive it for the state. So why don't we get together and talk about it and see who is the best fit? Hence the name best fit. So we all came together and we were at first meeting weekly, just to try to see who was the best fit for each of the grants. We put together a spreadsheet, and we're just trying to keep on top of it. It's a challenge. Technically, I'm only, you know, 25% of my position with this, but NCO is allowing me a lot more. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. But the best fits grant committee and anybody's available to come, we, we are in the process now of putting together some kind of code of conduct, just to make sure that we're all being transparent. Got my two notes, sorry. Sorry. We just, you know, want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we're, we enjoy, anybody that hears about a grant, if you, you know, bring it to our attention, we'll talk about it here. We are going to, I sat on a call yesterday, a webinar for, and actually, I think it's my next slide. Go to the next. So these are some of the agencies or the grants that we've written to. We've had guest speakers come and talk to the best fits committee. The Sonoma County came and talked about the BRIC grant, which we all decided that it's just a little out of our reach at this time. Maybe next year, we can revisit that, but it was just a little more than we felt that we could bring on. Several of the PG&E grants were applied for by Clerk for the North Shore Fuels Crew. The AIM grant is being, was just submitted through the Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment, the California Fire Safe Council, and Cal Fire. There's a new grant that we're gonna talk about this Thursday. It's called the Evacuation Routes Grant. And so I sat on a call yesterday for that, so I'm really excited. Because when I first heard about it, I thought, oh, this is exactly, it'll be a great fit to what Chief Seansio is doing, and, you know, we can make it happen. And then I think, I go back to my preparedness background, and I think, oh, here's what we can do. We can go into the homes, and we can talk about preparing, you know, each of the individuals and their households, and make sure that they have a safe route to evacuate. And then I thought, well, wait, it's evacuation routes. Are they talking more about, you know, clearing the brush and making sure it's a clear route? And it come to find out, it's all of that. And so I think with everything that's going on in the county, some other slides that I'll show you, some other ideas that we have, and what North Shore is doing, I think that if we can collaborate all together, we can make such a strong program that is sustainable and will keep us safe. Next slide, please. So we did, another one of those priorities was to get the CMAT report, and so that was done a few months ago in May. And we are working on a done a few months ago in May. And we are working on a committee, which I will also sit on, to talk about and start the work, make sure that everything that was written into this proposal is happening, that we're getting that work done. And next slide. Okay, so my background is, I've come, I've worked a long time with the AmeriCorps teams. I worked for the Office of Education with our local program. I've also worked with the, the, why am I losing it all of a sudden? Just every branch of AmeriCorps, from the Senior Corps to the Vista members, to the NCCC, National Civilian Community Corps. We've had 14 teams that worked with Hope City to build homes over the last five years, since the Valley Fire, six years. And so we decided when Hope City left, that, well, we don't really need a team to come and build, you know. And I was always able to steal the team away to do events such as the pictures there. And I will note that that top picture, the top left-hand picture, is actually an event where we did Sound the Alarm with the Red Cross in the neighborhood, Inqur Lake, that just burned. So in 2018, we did Sound the Alarm, and we went into those homes and placed alarms. So it's just kind of touching to think that, you know, hopefully that may have had some impact. Anyways, so we have been re-discussing how we could get an AmeriCorps team here in Lake County, and, you know, kind of what they could be doing. I think that with this evacuation routes grant, and some stuff that the Seagull Springs Redevelopment Committee has written for, it kind of is that other side to what Chief Siancio is doing. So he's doing more of that mitigation, that fuel work, but we still need that preparedness and that, you know, individual with people getting in the homes, making sure that they have their smoke detector, making sure that they know where their go-bag is, where their stay box is, how, that they have their list of medications, that they have those things, and that they're ready. So we have been asked to apply. We were okay to apply for round one, but we just couldn't pull the lodging together. So Supervisor Simon has met with the Central Park Association to try to get the dorms as a location for them to stay. But my idea is that if we could get the dorms for half of their term, which is from January 2nd, or January 11th, April 1st, and then if we can get somewhere on the North Shore for the other half, that this would be the perfect opportunity for them to pick a neighborhood each week, and just go into that neighborhood and infuse their knowledge of preparedness, and make sure that our communities are ready and prepared for our next disaster.
I have a quick question on that. How many AmeriCorps members are you looking at bringing in?
So the AmeriCorps members are teams of eight to 12, and they're 18 to 24-year-olds. They are very self-sustaining. They do need a kitchen as best. I mean, they could stay in hotels, they could stay in, like tents, but I really don't want to put them, you know, they're doing a lot of work for our community, so I feel like we need to kind of, that's why the dorms has worked out so well. But it's eight to 12 of them, and a lot of times, they can request two vehicles. It's just, you know, we can request anything, but doesn't mean we're going to get it.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And any other questions with the Ameri-
Actually, I talked, I've heard about this before, sorry. I didn't have my microphone on, but I heard about this briefly before, and so I talked to Lou, who runs the Castle. And so I just needed to get more information from you all about, you know, how many and what they need, things like that. Maybe there's something we can work out there. So I'll talk to you after about-
Perfect. Yes. Okay. And next slide, please. And then events. My background is I'm all about the events, so I love this slide, you know. We are going to do, I did work with the fair with the Fire Safe Council. We had a booth there. We'll be at the Hero Health and Safety Fair, and of course, the North Shore Fall Festival. We've, you know, I think a lot of the RRA is getting the word out there. I think that we, we have a great membership, but we can always grow it. And I'm looking to, originally, we started to do some work with the COED, and I really would like to pull the COED back in and make sure that we do have a strong COED here, because we haven't for so many years, that I think that that's something that will help us to just make our whole county stronger and more prepared. And COED is Community Organizations After And next slide. And this is me, and you can reach me. I also put a plug in for Know Your Zone. Do all of you know your zone? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, just to make sure. And that's it. And I can answer any questions as long as they're easy.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Supervisor Pyska?
So I'm super excited about this, Tammy. Thank you for doing the presentation. This has been the vision that we've had for the Risk Reduction Authority for a long time, to finally have that capacity, and have someone that can see through everything that we're wanting to accomplish. And I was just wondering if you could take a moment and talk about the Fire Safe Council grant that you applied for, for your position?
Yes. So, and I thought that was written more in there. I must have skipped it on my notes. So we, NCO did apply for the California Fire Safe Council Coordinator Grant, and originally, we were going to write the position that I would oversee somebody to do that work. And by the time we were done, it was switched over. So it's 75% of what would be my job would 25% match. And basically, it's just to keep doing what I'm doing, to make sure that, you know, the RRA is on track, to oversee this AmeriCorps team that we could get. Also, we did write in some CERT, which is Community, oh, I'm getting my acronyms, too many of them, Community Emergency Response Team. NCO did have a grant last year to do a few of the trainings for the CERT. But that's kind of a, I think, they're just all going to complement each other. I think that a CERT, the CERT teams, which we have a lot of CERT-trained folks up, you know, on Cobb and up there, there's a few others around, but if we could have, and many years ago, there was a CERT team in Spring Valley. But if we could get, you know, a few of these solid CERT teams, I was really excited, because I got a call a couple weeks ago from the OES manager, and he was asking if the CERT team was available to go hang door hangers. So I was like, yes, yes, let me, you know, pull them together. And so we came together, and it was kind of a nice time, because I am just taking on that program. I haven't been overseeing it for the last couple of years. And so I got in contact with them, and we had a crew ready to go, but we didn't end up being needed for that. They did get called out, though. They helped Red Cross open the shelter at the Senior Center. And so I just feel like all of those things together can make us stronger.
Yeah. And so we, Supervisor Simon and I asked this board for funding to enter into this contract with NCO. And so this contract, or if you get the grant for the Fire Safe Council, that's going to help sustain you even longer.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's pretty awesome. Thank you for everything.
And more time.
Yes, and more time. And that's one of the things that, you know, when we originally wrote the contract, we just were kind of shooting at how many hours she would need, and we definitely undershot that. So this is a way for her to be able to, luckily, NCO has been helping out with that. So very excited. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing. And one other thing, the CERT teams showed up at our vaccination clinics, and were really valuable volunteers all throughout the spring.
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that one. We did come to the board and ask for the funding, that we are going to work diligently to make sure that it's self-sustaining on the grant opportunities that are out there for the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. We greatly appreciate, you know, obviously, all of our members. We understand that, you know, as we move forward, there may be some contributions that are made from all the other agencies, and other things, we're trying to collaborate on that, and we'll talk about that as a board as we move forward. But the critical work that needs to be done, I'm really excited it has been started with the NCO coming on board. You know, one thing I know Tammy kind of went over was, the first time in Californian history to have a CMAT through the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority and the Forest Service. So I was excited about that. We're starting to, you know, really build that representation, reputation out there, that Lake County is stepping up with the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, and something hopefully that'll be a model going forward. So I want to thank everybody for that support, and like I said, the hard work that's being done. And there's a lot of it, and we'll continue to try and just expand those opportunities for everybody. And the focus, the Best Fits really does highlight the funds that are available to Lake County, and whether it's through the Risk Reduction Authority, or just support letters, or other things for the agencies doing it, the most important thing is that those funds available are coming into the county, no matter what organization it is, because it's always job opportunity and creations, but also working on that overall CWPP plan, once it's completed, get those projects done. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Grandle?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to highlight that I, thank you for coming to our Upper Lake Town Hall. I know last month, you came to that, and it was very, it was very helpful. They're always giving presentations, and with your support there, it was very helpful for the public to know some of the things that were happening when it comes to the Risk Reduction Authority, and what's going on. And nothing makes me more excited than to see something funded, and then continuing on their own, self-sustaining. So, you know, good work.
And at this point in time, and I'm sorry if I just misunderstood, you have not yet received the grant that would continue that funding. You're working on it and hoping to get it?
Yes, we applied, we actually submitted on September 15th. It was due at the end of September, and we're hoping to hear before the middle of this month.
Okay. And if by chance it doesn't go through, what does the original contract that we provided the funds for, what does that go through?
I think that was-
Or have you already done your hours?
It's one year. So she started July.
Okay.
But the, how many counties were eligible, or how many grants were the Fire Safe Council giving out? Because I, it was counties that had experienced wildfire impact and had vulnerable populations, and wasn't it like 30 counties, or?
Yeah, it was, it was a high number.
We feel pretty good about it.
I don't think they even gave a number.
Thirty-two counties that were impacted significantly by fire over the last couple of years. So I think we put the good program together, we put the, you know, what they needed in there, and I think we met the requirements, so we'll continue to follow up on. We're pretty optimistic that it would be the counties that were affected, and obviously, Lake County was one of those that was affected by those, is on that list. So, yeah, no guarantees, but ultimately, we feel, as we say, a best fit for Lake County.
And I have that proposal if anybody wants to see it.
Yeah, we wrote, we sent in the letter of support, and it's for $175,000.
And again, I apologize if this is information that should already be known, but just checking in, since it's for Firewise Council, does it also help with the position that you've been requested to lead in the Risk Reduction Authority as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And the reason I'm bringing it up is, we just had a good presentation from the fire chief. I just spoke about looking at two years, just to make sure, because this is not something that we need today and not tomorrow. I want to make sure that this momentum with the risk reduction continues. It's good that we have another eight months left with the original contract that we signed with the county, but if it doesn't come back, I'd love to look at multiple years, just to make sure we're covered, until we can make sure we receive those grants in case that we don't. Because I think it's too important to go little by little. We need to really think about much longer-term processes, because this is, this is not going away as far as a potential impact to our communities. We have to keep striving and keep working to make this happen. And I'm really happy that the Risk Reduction Authority has gained the level of momentum that it's gotten. It's so difficult to start something as large as this, because it does take time. You have to be patient, you have to build the building blocks, and then eventually, you can get that momentum, and we're there. I'm really feeling that, and I'm really happy that we've persisted through the whole entire birthing of the process, and have a unique situation as well in the state of California, that people can model based on what Lake County is doing. So very, very proud of what the work is going on. So thank you very much to the committee and to all those that are taking part of it. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Raise your hand, or come to the microphone if you're on the, in the board chambers. Seeing none in the board chambers, and seeing none in the Zoom room, oh, we have phone 6205.
Good morning. I'd like to ask, this is Bart Levinson, and I, being a Valley Fire survivor, followed what happened with the dormitory from the beginning, and I'm a little confused about the status now. What we were told at the time was that Hope City agreed to build the dormitory to give to the county for the county's use, so that Hope City, in return, would, for a number of years, house volunteers to help build homes after the Valley Fire, and that at the end of their time in Lake County, that Hope City would hand that dormitory back to the county. And I believe there was also a million dollars that was given by the, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the name, the Lily Langtree Big Resort Project. So I want to bring attention to, where has that important asset for the county that we, Valley Fire people, waited for our homes to be built, so that that could be built first? We suffered so that could happen. Where is it now? Why isn't it in the county, available for good works use, like is being talked about today?
Okay, I'll go ahead and, I can answer all those, that comes, Bart. So the dormitories were built on Central Park, the Central Park Association that owns that property, is the owner of that, that building. It is not, or was not, that was before my time, but I'm almost 100% positive, not a, going to be built and given to the county. That was a program that was done between Hope Crisis Network and Hope City, and the Central Park Association. They tore down the old Senior Center there, that was their building on that, and it was rebuilt. So now the Central Park Association, which I've attended the meetings and made the request to use the facility, that is their facility, not a county facility. The million dollars that you spoke about of, that was given to Hope Crisis, Hope City to rebuild homes, was from an individual, and that was given directly to Hope City to build those homes. I know that the homes that, you know, were going to be built, they had finished their work here in Lake County, I think altogether, if I remember right, it's about 51 homes that were rebuilt, whether it was through coordination of direct funding, or Hammers for Hope, the CAL Home Program, or others that were completed. But the, I hope that answers both your questions, Bart.
Thank you very much for that response. Oh, and let me go ahead and unmute her again. Apologize, I thought you were done.
Thank you so much. Yes, so why is the Central Park Group not allowing the dormitory to be used?
Nobody, nobody has said that. Nobody has said that at all. They've been approached at just a public meeting. They have not declined anything.
So I know that they were asked a couple of months ago, what's hanging this up?
Well, you know, associations take time to make decisions. You know, I don't think there's any hangup. I just, we'll continue to follow up. The dorms, obviously, January 11th is a little ways away. We've got plenty of time, and we'll continue to follow up on that. And as we heard in today's discussion, there may even be another opportunity here in Lake County. So we did not-
Right, we missed the whole- Right, we missed the whole last round for NCO for AmeriCorps and that's such a loss to our county when we so badly need the help.
We did not, we did not put ourselves in a corner where if one option didn't work out, we didn't have another. So as we've spoken, even at the Risk Reduction Authority meetings, whether there's another spot in the north side of the county, which was spoken a little bit about with Supervisor Crandall, but we also looked at hotel opportunities and other things. They've stayed in many different areas and we would never tie ourselves into one shot. And if we don't get it, then, then we're in trouble. So we always have a backup plan and like I said, other, you know, potential opportunity on the North Shore and also hotels being able to step up throughout the county also. So we're working on all those, Bart, and we'll keep you updated. If you attend the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, you'll get an update on a monthly basis.
Thank you very much for the responses. Any, I see no further hands up in the Zoom room and I see no further hands as well in the board chambers. And so bringing it back to the board for any final comments before we conclude this item.
Just, I just want to thank Tammy. I want to thank NCO. Our CAO's office was really instrumental in getting this contract together and, you know, just, we're going to plan to be here every quarter and, and let you all know what's going on every step of the way.
I think the last thing to say on this is, you know, one agency too, I think when we had our list of agencies, there's the Lake County Prescribed Burn Association that has been started in the county. You know, I know they've, they've been attending, Mike Jones, I think, is the one that's been spearheading that in our area. So I'm hoping by our next quarterly report, there are going to be projects where we have some prescribed burn opportunities that are happening in Lake County. So excited about the future, especially moving into 2022 and mitigation efforts are going to happen during that time. So, thank you.
So I just also too, I did, didn't mention this, but Carol and Carolyn have been just a great support to us and really helped us. My coworker, Angelina, does the minutes and the agendas and they've really supported us and I just want to say thank you for that.
And I know this has nothing to do with the risk reduction, but thank you very much to both you and Angelina as well for all the help that you've provided to all the fire survivors from Cache Fire who are still displaced at this moment in time and getting help and assistance through your agency. So I just wanted to make sure and say thank you for that while you're here. And that looks like that will conclude that item. So thank you very much for your presentation. Looks like we, we didn't throw the hard balls.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item 6.6, 10:40 a.m. Consideration of Urgency Ordinance, Amending Water Hauler Ordinance, Prohibiting Water Hauling to Commercial Agricultural Operations, Including Cannabis Cultivation Sites. So I put this together, I'm sure you all remember back in August, I believe it was August 31st that I put on my memo. We had a conversation about urgency ordinance, about water hauling. It was originally intended to be for all cannabis. We reduced it to just illegal cannabis and upon approval, had further conversations and we kind of cut the enforcement of that ordinance at its knees in the sense that there's no way that we can go after our water haulers when they have absolutely no knowledge of what's a legal grow, what's an illegal grow and not to say a statement that can be misconstrued, but our, our sheriff department have to call and ask for that information as well because they, it's just not common knowledge. And we're working on a better system to be able to have an overall understanding of what's a legal grow and what's illegal, but that's not just, it's not readily available. And so to expect water haulers to know these things is not possible and for us to start fining them when they don't have that knowledge is also something that's not going to work for us. And so I worked to renew it in order to make sure that we have the ability to enforce the ordinance and I am bringing it back to you as another urgency ordinance, meaning that today would require a four-fifths vote in order to be approved and start, to be enforced as of today. And I am going to share my screen real quick for just a quick presentation. Let me see if that works. Okay, so originally, water hauling ordinance was aimed solely at legal cannabis. That's what we approved. That created enforcement issues. After speaking with the ag commissioner and the Farm Bureau, they showed their support to ban water trucks for all commercial agricultural operations as that is not the way that crops are, are typically dealt with for watering. It's, it's just not feasible economically to use water trucks for that type of commercial activity. After reviewing the conversations being had in community development, it would appear that a drought does not meet the emergency exception as well. That is something that right now we're receiving some phone calls and some comments saying, hey, I'm bringing water trucks because I don't have access to water. There are conversations saying, well, the emergency is meant to be if your pipes break, if your pumps break, which is what I brought originally to the board, but because we didn't want to go after the legal cannabis, we got rid of all that. I'm bringing this back as a proposal because we have to better plan for situations. This is, a drought is a long constant. Some would say it's been going on for the past few years, not just this year, and definitely prior to planting this year, it was well-known in advance that we were already in a drought. Water trucks damage our roads. Water trucks are taking water from areas that we're unaware of where it's coming from. That's a separate issue that we're going to be dealing with in the near future. But it's also very specific in the, that ordinance for legal cannabis, that delivering commercial water is not acceptable except for emergencies. And I want to help community development who's having these back and forth conversations to let them know what emergency means in those situations. So in this ordinance amendment, we, I created a new definition called Commercial Agricultural Operation, which I got from the California State Water Board. Then I used our definition of agricultural use from our Article 68. And then in Commercial Agricultural Operations, I said that it, it covers all agricultural uses. If you look at our definition of agricultural uses, it also has animal husbandry, raising of animals. I excluded those because we need to make sure that we don't have animals that are being hurt by not having access to water, that in my opinion is just ethically wrong. So we excluded that. And then added also that under Commercial Agricultural Operations, it's legal and illegal cannabis operations as well. This covers all crop-bearing commercial agricultural activities in our county. Also, there was a restriction. I spoke with the county of Mendocino. They are actually taking our ordinance. They're trying to carbon copy what we're doing. They're having a lot of struggles with water trucks too. And they added the no deliveries between 12 a.m. and 5 a.m. I did have conversations with Supervisor Pyska about this as we discussed other water issues and I know that there was support for having that on there and so I made sure to have that. And one of the reasons this came about is from a conversation and I'm going to describe a conversation that I didn't have, but between Supervisor Pyska and a fire chief, that in the early morning, because water trucks spill water continuously, that it makes the road very slick. And so if we can try to eliminate the overnight water issues where you can't really see it on the road and there's the potential for sliding, let's go ahead and eliminate that. And of course, with the, the type of activity a water truck brings, it's not exactly quiet. And so for the people living nearby, at least it can also reduce the noise disturbances. And so those are the changes that I've offered in the ordinance. I believe that's the last of my slides. I'll keep that up for a second. And those are, again, looking at it as a whole, we have water trucks that are typically never involved in agricultural crops that are now absolutely involved in agricultural crops. We need to ensure that water trucks understand that these things are not supposed to be done in that way. Obviously, if you're dealing with illegal cannabis, they should know better, but at the same time, we don't have any rules, we don't have any regulations, it's hard to tell the difference. And having a water hauling ordinance amended in such a way that says, look, all ag for crops, if you're going to deliver water, that means that, that garden has not been well-prepared enough to have that activity. Or there was a mistake in the analysis of that land use, use permit in saying that you can do that activity. We have to be better prepared because if we have a problem in one area where a well turns dry, by saying yes to water, water being trucked to that property, we're going to impact another property that we never actually analyzed in our sequel analysis and we don't even know where that property is, because eventually it's just taking water. Again, there's some other outlying work that is being done between Supervisor Pyska and myself. We'll discuss some of that actually a little bit later in the agenda, but this is one step in helping curb some of the issues that we are seeing. I know that when we did pass the ordinance the first time, I got a lot of phone calls from water truck owners. And so obviously, we have their attention. The ones that I receive phone calls from are definitely ones that wanted to do the right thing and not have an issue. I did get one comment about this and it says nowhere in there that this is, that you can't do this. They were asking about dust control because they do have their trucks coming through to pick up their products that they're harvesting. This only talks about for crops, if you look at the definition of agricultural use, dust control can be for construction use for many different uses. It does not cover dust control. I did also make sure and add a line at the beginning of Section 1 of the ordinance that says this does not cover construction and it does not cover residential use deliveries. Want to make sure, I know we've had those conversations where we get those phone calls where it's a little confusing, is it everybody? Is it just some people? Again, this is only for commercial agricultural operations minus the animals. And I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen and open for any questions or comments. Supervisor Scott?
My question to you, with our ordinance, how it sits right now, have we been successful in going after any of the water trucks to date? Do we know?
I know that Susan Parker is on here or maybe CAO Hutchinson might be able to respond, but my answer to that is I believe it is zero.
I believe it is zero, but let's let Susan Parker speak.
Oh, you just remuted yourself.
Yes, board, it has been zero. We do have one pending that we're pursuing, but to date, as far as fully citing, it's zero.
And is the reason for zero is because we have nobody, no boots on the ground to go after these trucks or is it because the ordinance is too vague? We don't, we don't know if it's an illegal grow or a legal grow?
I believe primarily it's staff capacity, right, at this point in time.
Thank you.
And what I would say to that is while it is staff capacity, I want to make sure that they have the full tools to be able to go through the entire process rather than being halted by not having the enforceability within that law. Because again, it felt like it was cut at the knees with the changes that we made.
No, I definitely agree and I, I think this, this needs to rise as a priority. These are phone calls that I'm receiving, that there's water trucks just constantly in and out of properties taking water. We don't know where the water's going. We don't know if it's going to an illegal grow or agriculture, if it's going to help homeowners, but we need to be making sure that we are on top of this. We're in a drought. We don't have the water to be going out. And my concern too is that a water is being taken from Lake County and moved to different, different counties in the area.
Right. And as an add-on, I'm not sure that I provided this information. I did meet with Susan Parker to discuss this item prior to bringing it to the board and she did also have the ability to review the ordinance prior to bringing it to the board. Supervisor Pyska?
So we are pretty much at the end of the growing season for most all crops. So in reality, I think this sets it up for next year. We have to plan that it won't rain. We have to plan that we're going to continue in this weather pattern. And so, you know, this is just working out the tweaks for next year and everyone will have the full understanding when they plant their gardens and farms next year. You cannot truck water to a farm. And I think just this is front-loading our property owners and our business owners that are, you know, planting their farms for next year. This is making the, everything crystal clear. And as Supervisor Sabatier and I mentioned, we have more conversations later today and we are going to continue this work pretty much indefinitely because this is the reality of our, our new climate.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I wanted to say that I appreciate the changes. They address all of the concerns that I had with the, after the initial ordinance that we passed. And so a lot of the things that are brought forward, especially in regard to focusing on, you know, the illegal, illegal crops and whatnot. In, in, one of the biggest things is we don't want to punish people that are doing the right thing, especially when they, they're not sure who they're actually delivering water to, you know? So I appreciate that that was stated earlier and like, I'm agreeable to the changes that are made, so, thanks.
Any other comment from Supervisor? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, obviously that was the one, you know, who made the change, you know, at the last thing, you know, I, I still believe and I still am to the point that if we're going to have an industry here and it's going to move through, that we need to support the ones that are permitted. I guess that question would go to Susan. You know, we do have, when the last report that came to CDD, that we had almost 65 to 67 permits that have gone through the entire process that are out there. I just, my question to Carol or, well, actually to Susan, I guess who's on the line right now, Susan Parker, would be, you know, there, there's no opportunity to, to get out there and to get posted which ones are permitted, to make that opportunity so these folks can, you know, continue on this year? Yeah, I, I agree with long-term planning and those types of things, but, you know, every industry has to figure out how to survive. I mean, we had all the businesses and other stuff do that right now. And I understand that when we talk about the water haulers, you know, we're talking about if we're cutting that off, this is cutting off jobs and opportunities for them and a part of our economy that may not have been there before. There are people probably have been hired to drive these extra trucks and make deliveries. So that is a part, you know, we're not just talking about the cannabis industry, but the ancillary businesses that support these businesses. So, you know, I know this is probably not the popular conversation today, but we got to look at it from both sides. So that's what I'm doing, I'm bringing it up. That's why I brought it up last time. And, you know, I think we still need to really work to, to support the, the legal business. And I know that's a challenge and I think, you know, Supervisor Scott touched on it too with making the change in this, what type of implementation process is this ordinance really going to have? Because since we've done the last ordinance, there probably have been deliveries to illegal cannabis grows and at this point, there hasn't been any action taken. And it is already now October, we are looking hopefully to go into winter here pretty soon. It may not rain, you're right, it could be, but nobody knows that 100% for sure that it's not going to rain. So anyway, those are some of my questions, but I really, for Susan, I really liked the question, posted permits on these cannabis grows. Where is that and what type of opportunity do we have to improve on that?
Well, the, the legal grows do, are required to post all their permits. However, we are exploring, looking at, or exploring posting the urgency water hauler ordinance at the, you know, at the roadside of the legal grows that can accept water deliveries. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. You know, just to look at, just look at a practical standpoint, obviously, you know, every license, ABC liquor license needs to be posted. You can't be having a, you know, beer delivery truck out front of something that does not have a license posted in the business. And I know the folks delivering, you know, that stuff under an ABC license is the same thing. So my thought would be, it would be something pretty simple to figure out on what is a legal cannabis grow and what is not for the opportunity of delivering water. But I understand there's a deeper conversation that you're bringing up Supervisor Sabatier, whether or not this is an emergency under that. And I know we're doing some other work and the ordinance that we have put in place definitely is, we're working on updating that and looking at those changes that need to be done. This is one of those that we'll have a continued conversation as we're redoing that. Understand why you brought it, but I just want to bring up all the conversations on both sides.
And it's, the conversation is useful to get to either a better understanding or a better solution. So I appreciate the comments, absolutely. Any further comments from board members? Ms. Grant?
I didn't mean to raise my hand for the board members. I was just too fast. I just wanted to make sure that there's clarification here that the ordinance, this urgency ordinance, if approved, is not just illegal cannabis, it's all commercial, all commercial growing of any kind, including cannabis. So-
Yes.
When I heard about posting with regard to illegal, if this is, if this is passed, it will encompass legal and illegal as well as any other commercial ag.
Indeed. Thank you very much for that. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. And let's go ahead and start in the Zoom room. We have two people. Let's start with Dan Terrell.
Hey, good morning. My name is Dan Terrell. I live out in the Jerusalem Valley. I got a chance to go through the last night. The original cannabis, commercial cannabis ordinance. And, you know, it talks about water being supplied for emergency use. And I used to work in law enforcement. I worked for eight years down in Napa. And we talked a lot about intent and, you know, what's the intent of the law? And what's the letter of the law? And I, I don't think it, you know, the, the drought as an emergency for normal people, yes, it is an emergency. For animals, yes, it is an emergency. For somebody's cash crop, it's not an emergency, so it fails. Just on the letter of the law, the intent of the law. I, I can't imagine that the framers who wrote up this ordinance thought that somebody would have 450,000 gallons of water, which is what it takes to supply an acre of cannabis through the season. 450,000 gallons of water trucked in through the course of the year, through water trucks. The impact on the local community, on the environment, on the roads, on the breathable air due to the dust particulate is, isn't measured currently. We have an air filter inside our house. I get about 10 water trucks all hours of the day and night through my easement. Every day, 10 water trucks for both legal and illegal cannabis. And that air filter needs to get changed out every week. And this is stuff that my kids are breathing in. And it's, you know, I, I think we live in the cleanest, we're supposedly the cleanest county for air breathing, you know, breathing air that, that's in the state. And I, I'm having a hard time picturing this right now on top of the noise of the trucks coming through. And these people have had water delivered since June. That's not an emergency. That's poor planning. That's absolutely poor planning. Another neighbor had ran his well dry, dug through four properties with an excavator to get to a different water source, ran that one dry, and is now having water trucked in so he can get his million-dollar crop out. I'm, I'm all for jobs. As Supervisor Simon pointed out, this is affecting people's lives, not just the growers, but the people that they support. It's affecting the water truck delivery people as well. But what is happening isn't responsible and it's not helping our, our community. It's definitely not helping the environment. And this is going to be long-term, you know, if you read the literature that's coming up.
If we can get to your final comment, your three minutes are up.
All right, cool. This is long-term. Global warming is happening. We're going to see boom and bust with water. So what we're doing now, what you're doing now is super important. It's like it's written for me and I appreciate it. Thank you for writing this up. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Jennifer Van Dyk.
Hi there. I'm an environmental scientist for the California Department of Cannabis Control. I work in licensing. I would like to point out, what I understand is that there are two issues that are trying to be addressed here. One of the issues is identifying legal and illegal grows and being able to tell the difference. And the other issue is the county penalizing trucks for serving illegal grows. It's not true that there is no way to tell who is illegal or legal. For the state to issue a cannabis cultivation license, the county has to give approval. We maintain lists with the county of who is legal. And legal grows, growers are required by state regulations to post their license outside of their premises so that it is identified as legal grow. In order to solve the issue, D C C is committed to supporting our legal cannabis grows. And if the county is willing to work up with us on maintaining a list on who actually has a license, then I don't see any reason why the county cannot communicate that list to their approved water haulers so that they know who is a legal grow and who is an illegal grow. I think it's irresponsible to allow, to basically allow illegal growers to receive this water. I know that there isn't a shoe in putting boots on the ground enforcing this. And there's a ton of illegal grows out there, and we're aware of that also. But in order, in terms of identifying who is legal, the, the state is willing to work with the county to provide an updated list on who is legal. And then you can provide that information to the water haulers so that we are not enabling illegal growers to continue to use a state resource such as water, which is so important and desperately needed right now, especially for legal growers who jumped through all the hoops, paid all the money and done a C Q and got their permits to be able to have their cultivation license. So I, I understand that this ordinance, this change in ordinance is to not penalize the, the legal growers, but there are avenues for the county and water haulers to identify who is an illegal grower. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Jennifer Smith.
Good morning, Board. Thank you to the previous Jennifer for pointing out that the legal farms do have our licenses, our state licenses and our local permits posted at the entrance. So I think that alleviates one of the questions. I completely understand the reasoning behind this and support it. I would just ask for a clear definition of what is an emergency and what is the process for getting that emergency water delivery approved and that it be handled in a timely manner. So I'd like to be able to manage those expectations from both the county side and the farmer side so that we know we're not going to wait three or four days, possibly over a weekend without water when it truly is an emergency that wasn't caused by ourselves. And that's, I think, preferred, and I can support this knowing that.
Thank you very much for your comment. And let's go ahead and go in the boardroom. Come on up to the microphone. Give us your name and you have three minutes.
Joan Moss, I think you're going to run into a lot of problems. Commercial agricultural use. I think that includes vineyards. And I think that people can grow six marijuana plants for their personal use, and they might have a couple of children. And then their well goes dry. And they need water for their children, maybe a couple horses. This is Lake County. It's not all one or all the other. I helped fill out an application, a state application for a neighbor. And that state said, if you have an emergency water shortage, you should connect with Office of Emergency Services. The state said that. Is Dale Carnathan responsible for delivering water to families who have dry wells, who might have a couple of marijuana plants? I think there's a lot of, it's not either this or that. This is Lake County. Everybody's, everybody's here and everybody needs water, including children. Thank you.
So I, I. Okay, thank you. I will repeat some of the things that have already been stated. Number one, this does not impact residential. It only impacts commercial. Having six personal plants is not commercial. So all of the things that you just said are not covered by this ordinance. Those people will still have access to water. It states specifically in the ordinance that it covers commercial cannabis based on 27, chapter 27.13 A T, which is only for commercial. The adult use is somewhere else. I think it's letter Z somewhere in, in that article. No, but it covers the vineyards. Absolutely, it covers the vineyards. Because the vineyards would never be vineyards if they had to truck water in. You would have a non-stop slew of water trucks coming in every single day just to have that. A vineyard is not a viable option if you want to use water trucks to have your product grown. That is why I've gotten the approval from the Ag Commissioner and the approval from the Farm Bureau of Lake County that they are perfectly fine with saying all commercial agricultural operations do not use water trucks because they do not. So just want to make sure and reiterate those points. Sorry, your turn. Please give us your name and you have three minutes.
My name is Mike Mitchell. So I guess I find it a little hard to believe that code enforcement, whose office is inside community development, can't figure out who's legal and who's not. Like they're literally the same department. So the whole memo that you wrote, it says, basically it's for enforcement of that other ordinance. It makes it too hard to enforce the other ordinance because nobody knows who's legal. But how does code enforcement not know what grow is legal? It just doesn't make any sense to me.
I never said that. Water haulers don't know.
But so, but code enforcement and C D C are enforcing the ordinance. So before they enforce it on a water hauler, they're obviously going to know if there's an ordinance on, or if there's a permit on the property or not. So it just doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense because the enforcement agency is the agency that's giving the permit. So they obviously know who has a permit. My other point is, if you have a permit to grow and they run low on water, I just really don't understand why that's not an emergency. I understand not wanting them to grow their whole crop forever on water deliveries. That's, that's clear. Nobody wants that and it doesn't make any sense. But if you have a property that's been sustainable the last three years, their well goes dry now, why not let them get water deliveries while they, they should have to put in it and enforce another plan, drill another well? There should be things that need to be done. They can't just rely on them forever. But on, for some period of time, if your well runs dry, you should be able to get water deliveries for, as a legal grow. It just doesn't make any sense to tell them there's one month left in your million-dollar crop and just cut it down and throw it away because you can't get a couple weeks of water delivery in the worst drought in 30 years. I just don't understand why you have to go after the legal grows to enforce this when there's so many better ways to enforce illegal cannabis. You look at other counties like Humboldt, they use the G I S and like a Google Earth that you guys have access to now, real-time Google Earth. Sending out abatement letters works a lot better than going after the water truck guys. If you really want to get rid of illegal cannabis, there's much better ways to do it. Only a small percentage of illegal cannabis even uses water trucks. It's not like every illegal grow in the county is getting their water delivered. But every illegal grow in the county is on Google Earth. And if, and every illegal grow in the county can be sent an abatement letter. So if you really want to stop illegal grows, there's better ways than attacking water haulers and trying to change the cannabis ordinance through an urgency ordinance when really, if you want to do this, it should be a real ordinance. And it should go through public comment and it should be done right. That's exactly why we're back here because the last time it shouldn't have been an urgency ordinance. You should have just done the ordinance the real way and then we wouldn't be coming back every 30 days. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I have a response.
What was that? Oh.
Yeah, please.
So in my district, we have water trucks running 24/7. They're destroying the roads. The roads are literally crumbling. And when you say, what's the big deal about getting some water delivered? Ask yourself where that water comes from and what part, what ecosystem that water is being diverted out of to support a farm that legally had to have its own water source. That's why this is an important issue because we have wetlands that are dry. We have roads that are crumbling. And this is not a sustainable farm if you don't have enough water. Now, we're talking about having some emergencies in here. If you're, if you have pipes break, if there's a short-term issue, then that can be talked about. But when you have legal grows that are, that are trucking in every single day for two seasons, that is a problem and that's what this is meant to address.
Thank you very much. Any further comments in the boardroom?
Good morning. Tom Nickel from Scotts Valley Water Conservation District. I'd like to encourage the Board of Supervisors to amend this ordinance 3110. It sounds sound to me. And most of you have probably heard my concerns about the water that's being extracted out of my neighbor's well and sold. The water in an augifer belongs to everybody in that community and they are not making a profit on it. They're just using it to exist or grow their legal crop or farm or water their livestock. The other thing I'd like to mention is the ordinance says from midnight to 5:00 in the morning, I would like to recommend that it go from dusk to dawn. There's a water truck leaving Scotts Valley in the evening for maybe or maybe not clandestine reasons. I think that might curb some of this. And anyway, I encourage this, amending this ordinance. This water belongs to everybody, not just one individual that's making a profit. And I know this water is going to illegal and legal pot grows because that's what this guy sets up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments, both in the Zoom room or in the boardroom before we close public comment? And seeing none, let's bring it back for further deliberation. Any further comments from board members? Supervisor Scott?
You know, I, I do like the idea of amending the time. I don't think there's any reason why somebody should be hauling water after, let's say, nine o'clock at night or eight o'clock at night. I just don't see the reason for that. I think we would have a better handle on this if it was done during the day where it could be seen. But I don't know what time, you know, what would be the best. I think dawn to dusk would be hard because it changes. I think we need to have set times, but I think it needs to be a little bit broader.
And I'm okay with changing the times. I, I think that 5:00 A M., in my opinion, should not change just because I, my, my goal in the long run is to bring this back and make this a non-urgency ordinance. Right now, it states that it only lasts through the declared drought emergency. But I think we need to be wary of the damage that trucks can do if we don't have some sort of regulation on what they can do and how they can do it. Again, our roads being damaged and water being taken from areas that we're absolutely unaware of. So I think 5:00 A M., especially, farmers start very early in the day. And so I'm thinking future-wise that 5:00 A M. is, is good. But I'm willing to go down to maybe 9:00 P M. or 10:00 P M. or something like that for moving that earlier time. I do want to speak on some of the things that was brought up. I'm actually, I'm, I'm just going to be blunt. I'm saddened that the B C C is actively trying to say that water trucks are okay. I'm, I'm very saddened by that because that is not a part of our analysis of the environmental impact of the land use, which means that at any point, we can just, whether it's June, whether it's July or whether it's towards the end of harvest, it's perfectly fine for water trucks to start their operations to make sure that these crops can continue. These crops need to be self-sustainable within the property that they're being grown in. And planning is, is the key of being successful. And I will say that, that just in the past week or so, it's been frustrating to help some, solve some of the problems when we're only being told of these problems a week before we need to find a solution because there is an absolute lack of planning at this moment in time, in my opinion, by the industry to do everything correctly. And so we, we, we need, we, we go through this arduous process to review your hydrology, not so you can go get water somewhere else. We review the process to know the impact. But if we don't know you're using water trucks, that's a whole different traffic study when that traffic study is a part of the process of reviewing your use permit. You can't just add things because it works for you. And I've been here continuously when we've been saying, no water trucks, no water trucks. And all of a sudden, oh, wait, I need water trucks. So you can't, we can't change because of, of personal needs. We have to figure out how to remain within the guidelines and we have to plan ahead in order to meet those guidelines. And yes, there's going to be some sacrifices, but the sacrifice of the person who wants to. to use their land for a specific project that we've gone through an arduous process should not be also the sacrifice of the neighbors that are now dry, which is why that you are getting water somewhere else, who may impact other neighborhoods that may be impacted by the water that you're extracting. It's just, doesn't make sense to me that we go through these processes and yet that this would be okay. I was very happy to have the conversations with both our ag commissioner and our Farm Bureau to share their support, that this is not the way ag works. The way ag works is you plan, and if you can't, you diminish what you're planning to do. It is not feasible for our communities to have this continuing, and it's not feasible for this industry to blossom if that's the way it's going to behave. There was a comment about the emergency. I did not write out a definition of the emergency. I think that requires more time and more, the, the part, the portion that says that water delivery can be made available if it's an emergency, all I did in this one is state that a drought, a declared drought emergency is not an emergency. It's a long-lasting situation. An emergency, again, would be more along the lines, which seems to be the conversation happening up in CDD, between county council and CDD, that it's something that has occurred on, a, a surprise that has occurred, unexpected occurrence, such as broken pipes or broken pumps, that require some time to resolve, which at that point, it does make sense that this is an emergency. So I just, I, I, it's, I'm, I'm frustrated. Yes, we need to support it, and there's been a lot of support to get this going, a lot of trials and tribulations to get this going, and I get it that there's frustrations with where some people are and where some people are not. But this is not, in my opinion, some of the discussion that has just been had and some of the comments made is not, in my opinion, a way forward. We have to figure out how to make, if, we, we've said it multiple times, why are vineyards and cannabis seen differently? They shouldn't be. So let's treat them the same. We're offering to treat everyone the same right here, and this is how farming is done. So, I'm, I'm going to leave it at that. Any further comments or action? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just had, I had one question on, on an agricultural property, say, a walnut orchard, a vineyard. Are they allowed to pump water or get water from one parcel to another? Do you know that? Do you have an answer to that question, or do we have anybody online that can do that?
I would ask Ms. Parker to respond, but my, my belief is yes, and in fact, in our ordinance for cannabis, as long as it's approved by the neighboring parcel to bring water from that parcel over, but that's part of the plan that you would submit in your application. I remember we went through that, we went through that one, with one, one, one of the applicants told us of their issue and having access to water, and we added that in because that was part of a standard farming practice, that it may not come directly from this parcel, but comes from the other parcel.
And so, my question, not to cannabis, but to the other agricultural industries, are the same studies done for those industries that we're asking to have done for the cannabis industries? So if it's a vineyard, now you own 200 acres, but across the street is where my water is, but I'm not planting over there, I'm just bringing the water from over there. Do we do studies on that for the agricultural industry? Does anybody know? I, I don't have the answer for that, but I just had a question. Just came up when you were making some comments.
So I do know when you're, at least, the obvious one, because grading is very, there's a lot of gray in grading, how much dirt has to be moved and so on, but if you're going from native plants over to agricultural, you're going to have to get a grading permit, go through the SEQA process, what's your land use, and at that point, you would have to prove where your water was coming from.
Even under the agricultural exemption opportunities that are out there for the ag industry in Lake County?
It depends where you fall within the SEQA process. And again, Ms. Parker, if you're able to respond, or if there's anyone else from the department that can respond?
Because I thought ag exemption means they were exempt from, from my understanding, because I've had vineyards that, in, in my area, that said, "Well, it was previous ag at 1920, and now we're redoing an ag exemption process that doesn't allow a lot of those things to happen." Or doesn't encourage you allow.
Is that the Williamson?
Ag conversion.
And then that's why I was saying, from native soil, definitely you got to go through that process, but once you convert, it all depends, are you ripping out tree roots and moving enough dirt that it would actually trigger a grading process or not? That's where the gray area is, that it, it's, it's on a base, a project-to-project basis.
Okay. Well, I'm going to follow up on that and just get some more information.
Ms. Parker, did you have a, a response, or someone else that might be able to respond to that?
Well, what, what I was going to say, and I can talk to Moke after the meeting, is that every project is unique, so it's very hard to answer that question. There are some areas where an ag exempt would apply, but if he has a specific case, I'd be more than happy to look into it for him.
Yeah, I'll follow up with CDD. So just a question.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, any further comments or action?
I'll offer the words.
The, do we need a second to that, or is that good enough? Offer the, the ordinance has been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
No.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's see where that leaves us. Let's move on to our 11:00 AM item, consideration of local jurisdiction assistance grant program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you can imagine, Patrick Sullivan, our tax administrator, is going to present this item to you. We're requesting your approval to apply for the grant and seek your input into the content of our application.
Good morning, Board. So I'm here today to speak regarding the local jurisdiction assistance grant that's being offered by the Department of Cannabis Control. There was $100 million allocated in the state budget to help transition applicants, cannabis applicants, to a full annual license and alleviate the backlog that has sort of hit many local jurisdictions. Lake County has been designated as being an eligible entity, and we have been assigned an allocation. Our initial eligibility was $884,000 with an additional $1.2 million due to us having an equity program. So this gives us a grand total of $2.1 million that has been allocated. CDD staff and administrative office staff have been in meetings and contact with DCC. The primary use of the funds that we are requesting would be to help alleviate our backlog through addressing the review process, primarily by using consultants and contractors to help support our staff here. What we are also exploring is whether some ancillary services and support these efforts can be used for technology or equipment, but we are not yet sure of that. We're waiting for the state to get back. But generally, from our discussions, staff currently believes that is probably the best use of this. The state has put this on a very tight timeline. They want to get the funds flowing as soon as possible. So we've been given a deadline of November 15th to submit our application, and they expect the funds to be awarded in December. The state has also indicated they expect to front-load it, so hopefully, the majority of that money would be available to the county for use with this process as, as early as December. So right now, we were looking for direction on whether to proceed with this application process, and whether the general concept of using it for consultants or contractors to support CDD is the appropriate action to take.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Anything further from CAO Hutchinson? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for board members. Any comments or questions? I know that in the past, we've used the equity stuff for code enforcement. Is it possible to use that to bolster our code enforcement as well, or not?
So, Supervisor Spatia, we were actually using a different Prop 64 grant to bolster code enforcement. We also have the Public Health and Safety Grant, and those funds are currently allocated to code enforcement. This grant specifically bars the use of the funding for enforcement. They want this basically laser-focused on getting people their final permit and license, getting through the backlog. So there's, there's a lot of restrictions accompanying this grant to kind of keep it narrowly confined to that purpose.
Okay. I appreciate that. And also, we had an item earlier in our agenda, I believe it was 5.5, if I'm correct, for the extension of the contract for Laco. I know that there was, was it three others, or four others? Was it three?
A total of four bids were received, including Laco.
Right. So, thank you for that. And so, obviously, we, we know of others who have the capability to do the same level of work that Laco has been doing, and so it looks like we're pretty much prepared to start looking at possible agreements with some of those companies, since we already did the RFP bids, and utilizing that money for that process, knowing that it's taken so long for so many people. It's just been an arduous process for our staff to be able to get through, especially, yeah, especially with the, this being such a new industry and new ordinance and so on. So, absolutely in favor. Any other comments? Looks like no. Open it up for the public. Any comments or questions? We've scared away our public from the board chambers, and no hands up in the Zoom room. So let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
This is just direction, correct?
Oh, I thought it was approval.
It says provide direction to staff. I'm obviously in favor of-
Consensus that we should approve.
I'm in favor.
Yes.
Looks like you have your consensus.
Okay. Thank you, Board. And we'll have to return at a later stage for the formal approval of the grant agreement, probably at the end of next month or early November.
Perfect. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. It is 12:22 PM. We have, I believe, three items in our untimed, and then two items that we put in on, or at least one extra item, two extra items. And, do we want to go through that and then hit close session, or you guys want to lunch and then come back and continue? Looking for board consensus on this.
Well, I think you're going to need a break at some point to be most effective, I think, when you get to close session.
Okay. So let's go ahead and go through the rest, and then we'll take a break, and then do close session. All right, 7.2, considering of forming a county comprehensive drought planning work group, and this is brought to the board by Supervisor Paeska and Supervisor, myself. Supervisor Paeska, would you like to head this up?
Yes, thank you. So, this is a grown, I'm on my wrong. Comprehensive drought planning work group. So, you know, we, we were in a drought, we have work groups that are focused on short-term solutions, but what we really need to be doing is, like I mentioned before, planning that this is our new way of life, and really looking, digging deep into our ordinances, how, how, you know, our protocols, and figuring out how we can do better. So initially, this group will meet with department heads, and we can take an internal look, proactive steps to adapt to climate change and ongoing drought conditions, addressing and managing water shortages, short-term and long-term sustainability plans, and then drafting updates to our applicable policies and ordinances. And, and once we, once we do this work internally, then I would like to bring it back out into the public and have an opportunity to, to work closely with our subject matter experts throughout the county. So we did meet initially with some department heads. We had a, it was short, but we had a great little meeting, lots of really creative ideas to start with, and like I told the group, or we mentioned to the group, this isn't a sprint. This is a long-term process. You know, we, we, we let everybody know, this isn't going to require all of your time right now. This is going to be a monthly, that, or a meeting that is methodical, will have time to dig in deep, and it's ongoing. One of the things that we're missing in our, our, our general plan is our environmental justice element. And so this is some of the work that we can do to get there. So, I don't know if Supervisor Spatia has anything else to add, but the directors that we'd initially like to start with would be special districts, water resources, possibly public works, the health department, environmental health, our ag commissioner, our CAO's office, and air pollution control.
As well as-
But we can kind of move it as we go, depending on what, what is applicable, what, what our discussion would require.
Right.
And what we decide to, to work on as priorities.
And so what we decided was, we have a policy that no more than eight hours of our department head's time, this is definitely a more than eight-hour type of situation. We are in it for the long haul. The idea is, when there's a drought, we kind of ask the community, "Please conserve water." And those that truly want to, do, and those that don't want to, don't really have to. Like, there's no mechanism. And so, we don't have any rules and regulations that tells us, "What does that reduction look like?" We don't have rules and regulations for schools. "What does that reduction look like?" We need to have a more comprehensive plan where we're all working together to truly make the difference, rather than those same usual suspects that always want to step up and make things better for every one of us. And it needs to be a more comprehensive plan. Making that plan is going to require a lot of communication between the different types of agencies, different sectors of our economy. The idea, as was just mentioned, part of our general plan, what's lacking, because it was put into place ever since 2017, is any general plan that's updated after 2018 needs a climate action plan. We do not have that part of it. This will help at least start the framework of a climate action plan within our general plan, when talking specifically about droughts. And so, the, these are things that do exist in many other jurisdictions and communities. We don't have that. We feel the need because we know that this is going to happen again and again. Let's be better prepared for the future, rather than always trying to work and try to figure out how to deal with the impact of droughts when we're in a drought. Let's have that forward-thinking and be better prepared. So, we're asking for the board to approve the creation of the planning work group for drought. Any questions or comments?
I would just add, Mr. Chair, that the administrative office will help you with the scheduling and the organizing and getting it rolling. So we'll work on that if you approve this.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? And seeing none in neither the Zoom room or the boardroom, bringing it back to the board for action.
Just have, you know, one final comment.
Yeah, please.
Obviously. Looking at the, the long-term goals, and I know we talked about, glad to hear special districts on there and other things. When we look at those opportunities for tertiary opportunities, treating our water and everything down the road, recharging, you know, getting other water out, I think that long-term opportunity is there, and we look at that. One other thing, too, that really bugs me, when we're talking infrastructure opportunities, I know we're in our, in our long-term battle with Lake Pillsbury, but also looking through our general plan ordinance and other things, that we're looking to support any property owners that may want to be doing some damming or more, you know, lake storage or other things like that, to be encouraged in Lake County, because I think that's going to be the long-term opportunity, too, that we need to be looking at that stuff. And I know a lot of the stuff being built now is for agricultural reasons, but we need to look at that long-term sustainability. There's folks that do have water rights that are unable to store that stuff here in Lake County, and it goes down to other, other areas down below us, whether it's through Berriessa or other ways, you know, into the Central Valley there. So looking at opportunities to engage local private landowners that have opportunities for storage through community development general plan, I think is real important for us looking at the long-term sustainability. So, a couple of those, I should just want to bring those up. I know it'll be a long-term process, but I really want to do that. I was discouraged to see that the infrastructure bills that they're talking about at the federal level don't include building more dams and water storage, and I understand there's a lot of environmental concerns about that, but water is already gold, and it is going to be worse if we get it- gold, and it is going to be wars that we get into later on about this stuff. So looking at that long-term sustainability for Lake County, I think we really need to be encouraging that for our local folks that may have opportunities to do that, or larger projects here in Lake County that we could do. For years, we've all heard about dams that they potentially tried to build, or in my district, Dry Creek area. At one point, there was a conversation back 30 years ago or so, just in, you know, old folks' history, talking about building up dams and storages, other opportunities for us here in Lake County. We need to be thinking about that for the long-term sustainability of ourselves. So just want to just continue that conversation, make sure there being that.
No, I appreciate the comments and absolutely, we're on the same page. I know that one of the things, and on a slight side note, one of the things that really stood out in the election process that we just went through for the recall was the frustration with the little amounts of Prop 1 funds that have been available to jurisdictions for water storage projects. And I'm really hoping that that will help release some of those funds, because the conversation was so loud and so obvious that it was being made. And so hopefully, the state of California will finalize the usage of those funds so that we have access. And absolutely, we can look into that and have those discussions within the group. Couldn't agree more. Any further comments before action? Then action.
Is it consideration or is it?
Mr. Chair, I move to form the County Comprehensive Drought Planning Work Group, appointing Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Sabatier to serve along with the dedicated county staff. Do I need to read off the dedicated county staff? Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 7.3, A, consideration of agreement for training services leading for diversity, equity, and inclusion in county government, and B, direction to appointed management employees and encouragement to elected department heads to attend this training. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start by expressing some gratitude to Pam Samick for putting this item together. Pam is enjoying a day off today, so I'll present it. Knowing that this type of training was an important priority for your board, Pam sought bids from qualified contractors. And ultimately, we are recommending that we move forward with an agreement with Nicole Anderson. You may be familiar with Nicole. She actually was referred to us by CSAC. She recently provided online training for county supervisors and administrators. I was able to attend that training and was surprised at how engaged she managed to keep participants, even in a Zoom environment. I was concerned, you know, this will be in Zoom, people won't really be paying attention. And it wasn't like that. She keeps you engaged throughout the, the time. And so what we're proposing with this agreement is that all county management staff would participate. And so there's approximately 100 county management positions. In Zoom, the sky's the limit. But they would participate for two half-day sessions. And we're also asking that your board actually direct management employees to attend, and then for the elected department heads to strongly encourage them to attend as well. So again, Nicole Anderson is our provider of choice after looking at three different bids, given her recent expertise with the CSAC training she provided. She has a program that is tailored to county service, and she also has lots of other experience, as you can see from, from our write-up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I attended that course as well. It was very, it was very intriguing. Actually, you know, I consider myself kind of up to date on some of these things when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I still needed to be taught specific things. She took you down a tour of even history that we're not even taught. And so in going into some of these different aspects and different, you know, history, historical information, it really helps to open even, even my eyes, you know, even to things that I've, I haven't even thought of, you know. And so I think she's a great choice, and I would highly encourage, and, you know, everyone to attend that, that needs this type of training, you know, because it just helps. It helps in general, because people need to kind of have that empathetic type of, you know, mentality when it comes to working with different folks, so.
Thank you for the comment. Any further comments or questions from the board? I, I see this as, and I know this may come off bad for some of our staff, I see this as important as like our ethics class that we go through every year. It's important. I know it's a bit of a, a long stretch, and then also the sexual harassment that we go through. We just need to, we, we need to continue learning. We are customer service oriented. We deal with the public. We need to understand and comprehend how our words and our actions are perceived and be better prepared to have a welcoming environment and atmosphere. And so I think that those things are for everybody, not just management. It's for all staff that we need to learn those things. So absolutely, I know that I would, I, I don't know that we're a part of the management employees or not, but I want to be there because I, I want to have the same level of knowledge and understanding as what we're expecting our management to have. So I appreciate this coming through. I, I'll be honest, when I looked through the resume, it seemed very school-oriented. So I'm really glad that both CAO Hutchinson and Supervisor Crandall went through the class to let us know what they saw when they saw the presentation. And so that gives me a lot more comfort to absolutely say yes, or else I would think that maybe that wasn't the right training for a different type of environment. So thank you very much for taking time to go to that class and, and take part in that. So I'm ready to move forward and think this is absolutely important and a great step for us to take.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add that the intention would be to roll out training of this type to all county staff as soon as we possibly can, but this is a great starting point with our leadership folks.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. If there's no further comments or questions, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments or questions from the public? All right, bringing it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement for training services leading to, leading, leading for diversity, equity, and inclusion in county government.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
And Mr. Chair, I move to direct all appointed management employees and strongly encourage elected department heads to attend this training. Do we need a motion or just?
I think a motion is good, in my opinion.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we just take a two-minute break so I could confer with you for a moment about how the rest of the board meeting will, will go? Just two minutes.
Two minutes. Let's go ahead and take a two-minute break. 12:41 PM is when we will return. So we are back. We do have our 7.5, and then we have one other extra item for open session. But at this moment in time, we are going to turn over into closed session in order to take up the second extra item that we had approved. And upon concluding that, we are going to come back and then report if any action had been taken, and also then take a lunch. And so we will be back at 2:15. Actually, we'll, we'll report back at 2:15. So let's go ahead and go to closed session, and we will report back for the rest of our open session at 2:15.
You have to say what it is?
I don't remember what it is, because it's an extra item and it's, I'd have to ask CAO Hutchinson to read the heading of the extra item we will be taking on.
So we're taking on the extra item as soon as we go into closed session, and then we're returning at 2:50.
And what is the extra item?
Okay, and so the extra agenda item is 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Health Services Director.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will go to closed. And we're just going to go ahead and march forward. I know Supervisor Pyska was with us just two seconds ago, so I'm sure she'll be back. But we're going to open up with item 7.5, Presentation of Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SGMA, Sigma, Progress and Groundwater Sustainability Plan Engagement Activities. And looking at who we have here available, I see that we do have Deputy Director Marina Delagianis.
Hi, hello, yes, thank you for having me. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here.
And if we can turn off the lights, please? Thank you very much.
All righty, are you guys able to see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
All righty. Hi, Board, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Marina Delagianis. I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, and I also serve as the lead for the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. And I'm excited to be here today to give an update on our Big Valley Groundwater Basin as it relates to Sigma. So just a very quick overview of what I am going to be discussing today. So again, I'll just do a refresher on our Big Valley Groundwater Basin, our groundwater sustainability plan, so highlighting the development to date, and then also our timeline, going forward into Big Valley stakeholder engagement and outreach, our Big Valley public meetings, and next steps. As always, I like to just set the foundation and outline a few of the acronyms that I will be throwing out during today's discussion, one being Sigma, which is Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014. GSA is a Groundwater Sustainability Agency. GSP is a Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and GSPAC is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. All right, so our Big Valley Groundwater Basin is identified as a medium priority basin under California Department of Water Resources Bulletin 118. So as required by Sigma, all medium and high priority basins are tasked with developing a GSP by January 31, 2022. So quickly here, our Big Valley Groundwater Basin lies south of Clear Lake, and it includes Kelsey Creek and Adobe Creek, which both flow into Clear Lake, and it is a source of water for the community of Kelseyville and Big Valley Rancheria. Our Big Valley GSA is the, excuse me, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors in August of 2019, in compliance with Sigma, elected to serve, to sit as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So this is where it kind of gets just a little bit confusing. So as you folks are aware, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors also serve as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Supervisors. So therefore, when I refer to the Big Valley GSA, I'm also referring to the County of Lake Supervisors slash, slash the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District. Now, on April 27 of 2021, the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District slash GSA, acting as the Big Valley GSA, adopted Resolution Number 2021-50, which they approved the Big Valley GSA Charter document. And in this Big Valley GSA Charter document, that included the formation of the Big Valley GSPAC, which again is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. So the goal of the GSPAC is to advise the Big Valley GSA on the development of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and the intent of the GSPAC is to provide community stakeholder perspective and participation in local Sigma implementation. So our GSPAC is composed of an ad hoc advisory committee of Big Valley stakeholders and include representatives from the Lake County Watershed Protection District, agricultural users, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Lake County Land Trust, Lake County Special Districts, domestic well owners, Kelseyville Unified School District, Lake County Farm Bureau, Chai Council for the Clear Lake Hitch. And we are currently, as you can see here, this screenshot is taken from our charter document that is currently on our website. We are still, we still have an open seat for a disadvantaged community representative, again, as outlined by Sigma. So what is a GSP, you may be asking yourself? So basically, the overarching, overarching idea of a GSP is to provide GSAs in a community a roadmap for how groundwater basins will reach long, long-term sustainability. Again, our GSP is due to the state, January 31, 2022. Once this GSP is not done, we still have a lot of work to, to do. This GSP is going to outline how we're going to ensure that we reach and maintain sustainability by the year of 2042. Now, you may be asking yourself, who is building our GSP? It is a very tedious process, lots of going in, lots going into it. So we were awarded through DWR Sustainable Groundwater Management Program funds, 1.4 million, with $0 cost share, for planning, for planning money to develop this GSP. With this, we went through the RFQ proposal, and we were able to onboard Blue Dwarf and Scalmanini and Stan Tech Consulting Services to help us in the successful development of our GSP. Here you see our organizational chart. We have lots of folks on board, and this is just with our consultants. This doesn't include the hard-working staff of water resources necessarily, who are also helping us build this GSP. So all hands on deck, also our stakeholders, et cetera. All right, so I would like to highlight just a few little, a few different acronyms that we will be looking at, especially since we will be coming to the GSA in the next few months with some of these key points of our GSP development. The first acronym that I would like to highlight is SMC, and that stands for Sustainable Management Criteria. So this section, the SMC section in our GSP, again, is required by Sigma, and this section describes the Sustainable Management Criteria, which characterize the conditions that constitute sustainable groundwater management for our Big Valley Basin. The SMCs defines the sustainability goal and establish undesirable results, minimum thresholds, and measurable objectives for each applicable sustainability indicator. And then the second one that I would like to highlight acronym is the RMS, which is a representative monitoring site. So here you can see this graphic that I borrowed from DWR, and the RMS includes our subset of basin's complete monitoring networks, where minimum thresholds, measurable objectives, and interim milestones are set. So RMSs can be, can be used for one sustainability indicator or multiple sustainability indicators. And I would just like to disclose that with this graphic, you can see the ocean right here. Clearly, that is not our groundwater basin, as we do not have to worry about, for example, seawater intrusion. This is just a graphic. The next acronym that I would like to highlight is MA, and that is Management Actions. So project and management actions look different for each groundwater basin. MAs are developed to focus on the need to increase supply, manage demand, or do both to achieve sustainable groundwater management under Sigma. Our GSPAC is currently in the process of identifying the priority MAs for the basin to include in our GSP. And this is just one snippet that I stole from our Excel document that has a variety of MAs that we are working on. And for example, this is just to develop upstream storage on Kelsey Creek. Again, that is just one tentative MA that we are looking at exploring. But again, we'll be bringing these priority MAs to the GSA for consensus and selection of the priority ones that we want to actually include in our GSPs. The last acronym that I would like to highlight for this slide is GDE, and that stands for Groundwater Dependent Ecosystem. So the GSP regulations provide a specific definition of GDEs as ecological communities or species that depend on groundwater emerging from aquifers or on groundwater occurring near the ground surface. So GDEs include springs, seeps, and base flow of rivers and streams, which often sustain surface flow during dry period. So for, again, just as a reminder, we have two streams in our groundwater basin, Big Valley, which is Adobe and Kelsey Creek, and we all are aware of our Clear Lake Hitch, which is listed species at the state level, and both of those creeks are, are priority spawning habitats for the Clear Lake Hitch. So we, we refer to that area as our GDE. All right, so this is a lot of fun, and you're probably asking yourself, how can I get involved? So we have been releasing draft chapters for our Big Valley GSP development for the last few months. You can find those on the Water Resources website. If you have any questions, you can always give us the call, and we can direct you to that. So these chapters, we are soliciting out, and we are requesting feedback from the community. If you do reach out and you do provide comment, you can provide those comments to water/resources at lakecountyca.gov. We have it listed there, where you can see the line, et cetera. All the chapters that we have been in the process of developing, and all the chapters that we still have yet to finish, will be on that website, and we are taking public comment. There's also a public comment period that I will be talking about in the next slide. But again, these are out for public comment. We would really appreciate and value your feedback as in the process of developing these draft chapters. All right, I apologize, this is not a pretty slide. There are, there's a lot of text on here, but this is our tentative timeline. So again, we have to submit our GSP to the state by January 31, 2022. So we are in the final stretch here. A few key dates that I would like to highlight is on the 1st of October, we released our Notice of Intent we released our Notice of Intent to Adopt our Big Valley GSP. This Notice of Intent, Notice to Adopt our GSP was sent out to the county, also the tribes, interested tribes in the area, and the tribes that have jurisdiction in the area, and then any cities in the area. Again, we don't have any cities in our Big Valley basin. This Notice of Intent to Adopt basically starts that 90-day timeframe of, okay, here's the final stretch, we're planning on adopting this GSP. We understand it's still in the draft process right now. But please, we would welcome any feedback, any communications that you may be interested in to make sure that we do this properly. The next one is on 11/2. It is tentative that the GSPAC will be coming before the Board of Directors, acting as the GSA, to consider the SMCs and the Communication and Engagement Plan that I will be talking about in the next slide. The next date that I would like to highlight is the 21-day public review of the GSP, which again will be released early, excuse me, early November. The next date is 12/22/21, the final draft of the GSP to be posted. 1/11/22, Big Valley GSA adopts GSP. And then 1/21/22, adopted Big Valley GSP, submitted to DWR for review and approval. And then once we submit that adopted GSP to DWR, they have a 75-day window for public review and comment, where anyone can comment on. Again, I put tentative timeline, but as you can see, there are certain dates that we have to hit. So we are staying as close, if not on this exact timeline as possible.
I think she froze for a second.
Can you hear me?
Hey, you're back.
Thank goodness. What part of the last slide?
You were sharing with us just the last of the information on the calendar, all your stars to show us the important upcoming meetings. We missed you for about five seconds, not even.
Okay, perfect. Yes, the stars are the key dates. Alright, so shifting gears into Stakeholder Engagement and Outreach. So in February of 2020, DWR awarded Lake County Watershed Protection District Facilitation Support Services, also known as FSS, to aid in our priority to properly conduct stakeholder outreach, GSA development, and public outreach activities through our Big Valley basin. So through these awarded services, we have been working very closely with Stan Tech Consulting Services, who helped up develop these outreach and engagement tools, such as meetings. So all of our GSPAC meetings, any workshops that we've had, workshops that we're planning on having in the future, presentations, information, interested parties lists, website ideas and designs, et cetera. So again, we've been working very closely with Stan Tech. They have also conducted stakeholder interviews with the stakeholders that you see on this slide. They have been a big benefit to us and have really helped develop the Stakeholder Engagement, Communication and Engagement Plan that I will be showing right now. So our, the Big Valley Basin Communication Engagement Plan provides a high-level overview of potential near- and long-term outreach strategies, tactics, and tools that support public and stakeholder communication actions, again, as required by Sigma, and for the consideration of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agencies. So the purpose of this plan, which we currently have the draft out now, and again, we would appreciate any feedback, input that the folks that you guys or that the community members may have on this draft plan. Again, you can find that on our Water Resources websites. The purpose of this plan is to meet outreach and engagement requirements outlined by Sigma, and most importantly, details the activities for engaging interested parties in GSA activities, GSP planning, and future implementation. So this plan also identifies a strategy for communicating with all stakeholders, details how stakeholders' involvement and feedback helps guide GSP development and implementation. As we know, our stakeholders in the basin are the ones that know our basin best. So it's important that we have these conversations and we communicate with them, and that they have a seat at the table. And this plan also identifies the methods and tools for communication and engagement. Again, you can find this plan on our Water Resources websites, and please take a gander at it and let us know if you have any input or ideas or comments or edits on this draft plan that we have. So there are multiple ways for the community to be involved in this process. I know we have a very quick timeline coming up, but the fun will not stop there. Again, after we submit this GSP, we still have a long road to cut us to ensure that we reach and maintain sustainability. So the fun will not stop after January 31st, 2022. One of the most important ways that folks can participate in these discussions about our Big Valley GSP development process is by participating in our GSPAC meetings. And we meet at 11:00 AM Pacific Time via Zoom right now on the 4th Friday of every month. You can find that calendar, again, on the Water Resources website. So we will be meeting on the 20th of October, and we also have a special meeting taking place on this Friday with a GSPAC meeting. Please join us, it's going to be a lot of fun. If you are not able to join us in real time, you can follow us on Facebook. You can follow us on YouTube. We have all of our recorded meetings. We have subcommittee meetings as well that any member of the community can participate in. We have the presentation, slide shows. You can give us a call, you can come to the counter. We would love to talk groundwater with you. I can talk groundwater for days, clearly. So join us, it's a lot of fun. You can also subscribe to our Stay Connected page, where you can put in your name, email, and any other information that you feel comfortable doing. And that way, you can be sure to get those routine emails and reminders of meetings coming up, ways that you can remain involved in our Big Valley GSP development process. So we do have some exciting next steps taking place. The first one that I would like to highlight is the airborne electromagnetic AEM surveys. So we are coordinating with the California Department of Water Resources. They are in the process of conducting these AEM surveys, where data collection is feasible, and our Big Valley basin is one of those. They are assisting local water managers as we implement our SGM requirements. And by doing this, the AEM measures the electromagnetic responses of the subsurface. So the data that is collected, as you can see, there's a helicopter here. That's exactly what it's going to look like. Responses to the subsurface of this data is collected using geophysical instruments on a hoop that is towed beneath the helicopter. And we are anticipating that these surveys will be taking place at the end of this month, early next month. We will be giving folks proper heads up and notification. And in the next week or two, Water Resources, we're going to be doing more of outreach activities in terms of notifying the public, doing informational videos, providing any resources, just so folks are aware that these big helicopters are going to be flying around and collecting these surveys for our groundwater basin. Another thing that we are looking forward to is we are in the process of applying for DWR's Technical Support Services. This is very similar to the Facilitation Support Services that we are awarded by DWR. As you can see, we have had a lot of help and support from our friends at the state level during this entire process. We wouldn't be this far without the support services from the state. So the TSS services, we currently have a data gap for water quality in our groundwater basin. So what we are doing is we are applying for these TSS services for monitoring well in the basin. And we have team members who are actively working on that application process. Another opportunity that we will be taking in the near future is again, applying for DWR Sustainable Groundwater Management Grant. As a reminder, we were awarded $1.4 million with $0 cost share to develop our GSP. That was a planning grant, but everything that we put in our GSP, we have to follow through. So we can't just walk the walk, we have to talk to talk. So with that, we are going to be applying for these funds to actually do the implementation part of our GSP. And that application will be submitted in the next, I would say, four to six months, but don't quote me on that. Alright, so I will be taking questions right now. With this, I also have information. If you want to give us a call, send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyca.gov. Again, please put GSPAC in the line. Come see us on the fourth floor, give us a call at 707-263-2344. All of our information for our Big Valley GSP is updated on a daily basis on the Water Resources website. And then you can also check out our friends at the Water Board and DWR. They have a lot of information on Sigma and groundwater as well. So with that, I am going to stop sharing my screen and take any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I do want to make a quick correction unless I heard incorrectly. Do not go visit Water Resources on the fourth floor. You might have a struggle finding it, make sure you go to the third floor. But other than that, really appreciate all the information and all the work that you're doing for this. And we do have a comment from Supervisor Pyska.
I really appreciate all the work that everyone's doing and the volunteers that are helping put this together. But along the lines of our conversations earlier today, I know that I am not the only supervisor that gets complaints of water trucks filling off of wells, and I have been receiving them for wells that are in the Big Valley basin. And if we're working to develop a sustainability plan for this basin, and then we have this type of water use, how is that affecting the plan? Is this legal to do? Can you just kind of talk about the impacts of that for a minute?
Yeah, and thank you so much for that question, Supervisor Pyska. So if folks are not aware, we do have our County Code Ordinance, Chapter 28, which is groundwater. It's not as, I would say, specific in terms of our Big Valley groundwater basin. You know, with this, this is relatively new. This is the first time we've had a medium priority basin in our county out of the 13 groundwater basins. So our rules and regulations are not yet final right now. So currently, there's nothing in our ordinance that highlights and prioritizes our groundwater basin. I don't want to say that folks that should, you know... I don't want folks to feel like they can't report that, because they should, especially if it's in our Big Valley basin. You should be reporting that. Give us a call at Water Resources, and we can work with the state. Again, we're in close communications with the state. This entire GSP process, we're going to have a better idea of how that is, how that situation and those activities are impacting our groundwater basin. So things will be coming down the funnel as we have these discussions earlier, especially as it relates to our groundwater basin in the next few months. So that's exactly the whole purpose of our GSP, is to highlight that. So with that being said, again, we do get these reports. We do report those with the state, especially the State Water Resources Control Board. If folks have any questions or confusion where to go, again, just give us a call. The State Water Research Control Board, I have that link that I can share with the board members as well, and you can forward those to your constituents. And they can also report possible violations of water rights. And the state will look into that as well. If you do submit a report, they will be looking into that, and they will have the best idea for that.
Awesome. So people can report this to Water Resources, but then also it's really important at this time to be reporting dry wells or lower productivity, and what's the process for that?
Yeah, great question. So the state also has a My Dry Well Tracking Reporting, excuse me, website, where if you want to report that to us, you can report that to OES, Environmental Health. What we do is the state has a statewide tracking system. There's also resources available for folks who have wells going dry that we can help guide you to those resources as well. So again, if you don't feel comfortable submitting that report on your own, we do need the APN or the address of where that well is located. If you just give us a call and say, hey, I have an idea. You know, I think this well is going dry, but I don't want to give you the idea. That's not a proper report, and we can't do anything about that. So I feel like the easiest thing that would happen is if you just wanted to give us a call, and we can help walk you through doing that reporting. Or you can find that on California Department of Water Resources, My Dry Well Tracking. And again, those resources are available on DWR's website, and then we're also going to put a link on our Water Resources website as well.
Thank you.
Any other comment from board members? Okay, I do appreciate this. This is about the future of our agriculture economy that's happening in that area and making sure that the water continues to be available to continue with the activities that we have in that area. I think it's an important project. It's unfortunate how bureaucratically involved it gets, this coming directly from the state. So it's very intense, but I appreciate the hard work that's coming through. I did have a quick question about your calendar of, for the lack of a better term, calendar of future events. January 11th, is that the board meeting that this will come back to us, or at least anticipated date of when it will come back to us so that we approve?
Yes, yes. And what we're doing is we're working with our consultants to make sure that we actually align this up with the board agenda as well, because, you know, it's slightly important to make sure that we have this following board day. So yes.
Okay, and so it looks like we have at the minimum of three upcoming board meetings that will continue to update us with all the happenings of the GSA. And we will continue to learn more and get ready to prepare to submit what's been put together to the state. So thank you very much for that. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public and see if anyone from the public has any questions. And I see none in the boardroom, and I see none in the Zoom room. And so let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back. And it looks to me as if we have no further comments or questions. Really appreciate your time and your absolute enthusiasm for everything groundwater-related, and look forward to further information coming from the GSA.
Thank you so much, Board. I appreciate your time today.
Alright, thank you so much. So we're going to take on item 4.1, and that is the extra item that was approved. So I'm just going to read it from Part B. Consideration for Selection of Supervisors to Speak to the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, Go Biz, About North Lakeport Train Project. As you know, we've put together an agreement with the company Train to look at energy efficiencies upgrades in the area. They started looking at innovative solutions. One of those was looking at the North Lakeport area. And there's been an invitation to us to go talk to the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, Go Biz. And they contacted me. I made sure that we also involved Supervisor Scott, since it's in her district. And also, she happens to be the liaison for the board with Sonoma Clean Power, who also happens to be a stakeholder in this project. So I wanted to make sure to not only let the public be aware and the board be aware that these are things that are continuously to move forward. We've had a few meetings now with Michael Day from Train, who has led us in on some of the applications that he submitted. But I also wanted to make sure that the board itself had the ability to choose who this delegation to go to Go Biz would be, rather than just going with what was selected to begin with. And so I want to open it up for discussion to see if anybody else wishes to be a part of this conversation. I know that I'm honored to have been asked and requested, but I'm also not married to the idea of having to be in that room if someone else is more wanting to be a part of this process. I would like to say that I would suggest that Supervisor Scott needs to remain on the delegation, as I think it's important for her to represent the area that the project will be produced in. But the other person, I think, should be up for discussion and seeing where it goes. So opening it up for board members.
Go for it, Bruno.
Supervisor Simon.
You know, at this point, obviously, I think anything coordination, collaboration with the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development...
Turn on your microphone, please.
Oh, thank you. It is a positive thing, so I'm fine with the delegation as set up, so.
Okay. And if there's no further comments, then let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments on the delegation to Go Biz? Seeing none in the boardroom and none in the Zoom room, then we will bring it back. And as I said, this was more for transparency as well as the opportunity in case any one of us chose to take on that opportunity. But I'm happy to go along with Supervisor Scott and support what needs to be discussed.
One last thing, and maybe you guys are already doing this too. I know we're going over there for a specific project, but make sure, bring it up everything that we're looking for.
We have other projects.
You know, our next decade here, so thank you. Take the opportunity, is all I'm saying.
I think they're only giving us 30 minutes.
You can squeeze a lot.
If there's 30 seconds.
You can squeeze a lot in 30 minutes. Look what we just got from Water Resources. You can get a lot of information out there.
So looking for action to approve for the delegation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Fernando.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabacca.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe that completes our open session other than calendars. So let's start with calendars, Supervisor Simon.
Finishing up the board meeting today. There is a field trip tomorrow to take a look at the 29 Expressway with LTA and APC, but I am going to miss that. I will have to do some traveling out of town tomorrow. I will be back here on Thursday. I will be attending a meeting later in the afternoon, Lakeport Annexation Negotiating Team tomorrow. I will join that meeting by Zoom. And then on Thursday, we have our special board meeting with evaluations. I'll be here in the office on Friday. Don't have anything on the calendar yet, but on Saturday, I have the Milltown, the MAC, this happening event. They've asked me to speak, so I'll be at the MAC event on Saturday. And then as always do, I always have a meeting on our calendar, just never misses. But we don't have a meeting next week, so we'll not be attending a meeting that does not exist. And then I've got an open calendar, so it'll probably fill up. But at this point, I don't have much on there. I have the drought EOC. I have a drought EOC on the 15th and then coming back on the 18th, which is a very important meeting. We heard the report earlier about the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. We have a couple of agencies, Workforce Alliance in North Bay and also the Eco Terra Organization to come in and just report on what they're doing. And then back here on Tuesday, the 19th. I don't think I missed anything. I may have. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Scott.
Tomorrow, I have a first five transition meeting at 8:15. I'm going to have a constituent in my office at 9:30. And then from 11 to 5, I'll be attending the Hope Rising. We're having a retreat to further understand what our goals are and what we want to be doing in the next coming years. On Thursday, Special Board of Supervisors meeting starting at 1:00. On Saturday, I'll be attending the Eli Stage Stop Discussion, learning more about our Native Americans. And then the following week, it's pretty open. 18th, I have a pit committee meeting in the afternoon and back here on the 19th.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska.
Tomorrow morning, there's a TID board meeting and then I've got a bunch of things to catch up on. Thursday morning is our best fit grant, then here for the special meeting. All the way to next Wednesday, I have the medical advisory meeting and there is a MUSD board meeting, then... Friday, the 15th, is Pregnancy Loss Day, which we talked about earlier. That's where everyone will be lighting a candle at 7:00 PM. The 16th is Heroes for Health and Safety. That event is going to be a great event. Again, I'm going to be in that night dinner at Peace and Plenty. The 18th, we have a risk reduction meeting in the afternoon and I have our meeting with CAO Hutchinson. But Supervisor Crandall and I have been invited to fly over Walker Ridge out of Davis and I'm super, super, super excited about it. So I'm trying to make that work with the things that I also have on the calendar. And I believe the RRA meeting is going to have to be in person because we didn't do anything.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I got some clarification. I thought it was the JPA of the county, so I thought it was covered under that.
Is it covered?
Anything that's not specifically only for the county needs those associations to approve the resolution.
It will need, but I can tell you that if you have the resolution on for that meeting and approve it to allow those, to allow their remote meetings, then you can continue that one time.
Work to get that added on the table.
But again, you have to take them up every 30 days. And if you don't meet every 30 days, you have to take it up anew.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I've got.
And Vice Chair Crandall.
Okay, so...
I'm terribly sorry. Excuse me. You don't actually have to do a resolution. You can simply make findings. I can send them to you, but you'll have to make them at the outset of the meeting. I'm sorry, Supervisor Crandall.
I wanted to know that, too. Okay. So after the meeting last week, I traveled straight to Monterey for the annual RCRC meeting and was filled with the schedule where Wednesday morning, we initiated with some topics where they invited some folks to come and talk with all of the representatives of the rural county. First was the implications of the migration of California. And when you hear that, you first think that it's about, you know, specific things, but it's really, it was about working from home challenges. It was about the influx of constituents moving to rural areas out of the urban areas, expectations of county services, infrastructure and economy. Also, people are leaving California in droves. They're leaving to Texas and Idaho and all these other places as well. So they were kind of going into some of those type of topics of realities that we'll be losing, you know, a House Representative as well because of the people leaving. And so just talking about those type of things and addressing it and getting us kind of aware of that. One of the most, my favorite was the keynote address by Secretary Leon Panetta, who was from Monterey. And he was part, he was the Secretary of Defense at one time and also was part of balancing the budget back in 1993 and discussed how he worked, how he actually really went into like a, he scolded everybody and for good reason. He didn't like the political climate that it has right now. He said, "The best thing we can do is work together to build a consensus for the better of the country and not, and not, and not fight amongst each other the way we are." And so I think everybody that was there that represented as a county supervisor really appreciated what he had to say despite his political affiliation. And everybody was pretty satisfied with that. And I think it would be nice if that was recorded and we could just send it out for a lot of people to hear because it was very important. Then after that, we talked about California at the forefront of alternative construction, which is printing houses with cement. I'm not sure if anyone's heard of it, but it's happening. Apparently, you only need two or three people to actually fix these homes and you can design it on a computer and you don't need as many, you don't waste as many, you don't have as much waste and it's more fire resistant, not fire, you know, you can't say it's fireproof because of legalities, I guess, or something of that nature. So the next day, you know, we had Politics 360. That was more about redistricting, you know, some of the discussion about the recall. And then just talking about different statistics and whatnot. These folks worked for like Politico and a couple of other agencies, journalists and whatnot. It was pretty interesting and then pretty debated topics, you know, heated debated topics, but that was okay. Next day was something about space. I'm not into space stuff, to be honest. I'm really more about stuff that's happening here. They talked about traveling to Mars and I'm like, look, okay. Anyhow, so then we had our meeting Friday. Just wanted to highlight too that we, it was our first meeting in, well, we had a meeting in person, of course, when we were in Mammoth Lakes a couple of months back. But one of the biggest things to come out of that is the RCRC's Wildfire and Forest Stewardship Ad Hoc Committee, the Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force Committee. They had a meeting. I'm on that committee now and so represent, one of the representatives from RCRC. And from that, it was a pretty decent meeting. I really appreciated it, networking with folks, had a really good talk with Michael Day while I was out there, getting some letters accumulated because there's some specific, you know, the more letters, the better. And so just having him kind of drive home some of that stuff. Cal Water Representative Shannon McGovern was there as well. And so that really helped. We were talking to different counties about how Cal Water has worked to, you know, reduce prices in our Lucerne area. And so we're just keeping these good relationships and networking in order to better represent our districts as well. So with that, yeah, back here, we had the Middle Creek Restoration Meeting yesterday. I'll let you go into that because I've already been talking way too much about. We had a FLOC meeting last night with the group. Well, we had a Neighborhood Watch meeting and we talked about the FLOC cameras last night. It was pretty, it was pretty good. They were pretty satisfied and the sheriff was in that meeting with me on Zoom as well and so was Sarah, the representative from FLOC. So we had a good discussion with the people about that. Tomorrow, we have the East Region Town Hall in Clear Lake Oaks, CSA 2 in Spring Valley at 7:00 PM. The evaluation meeting on Thursday, special meeting. Friday, I don't have anything as of yet. I think I'm locking in, possibly going on the radio maybe. And so then next week's a holiday, pretty open. I think I have a couple of things lined up. I just don't have them written on this calendar. But I know Friday, I have Laugh, third Friday at 6:00 PM. And then we're flying out over Walker Ridge. And so back here on Tuesday, the 19th. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much for your report. Looking back at all the stuff that I've done in the last week, I think Friday was the biggest amount of stuff. We are still discussing ARPA and trying to really narrow it down to a specific ask before we bring it to the Board of Supervisors for review and for approval. It's such an exciting conversation when you're looking at that large of a sum of money with a fairly broad amount of categories for how we can utilize those funds. And so it's a lively conversation. It's an important conversation and I can't wait to bring it back to the board so we can get those final discussions finalized and then move forward with the actual action plan of how to utilize those funds. We also met with Senator McGuire and his staff to look at the cash fire. There are conversations about looking at the intertie between Lower Lake Water District and Conocti Water, looking to get that application right now from Lower Lake in order to provide that to Senator McGuire's office. They are on top of that and they will get that to me as soon as possible. And also had a meeting with Senator McGuire. I know there was a program that just came out recently about Medicino, Trinity and Humble coming together for $1.5 million from the state to go after illegal cannabis. I did have a conversation with him about us needing that same level of support. And so he's going to take a look at it and see what's possible. No promises, but it, he seemed adamant that he would do whatever he can to help us out because we know we need that help as well. It's unfortunate that too often we think of the Emerald Triangle and think of the vertices only, but we're that whole entire green area in the middle of the vertices. We've always been a high point, especially when looking at camp, the campaign against marijuana planting. If we look at those numbers, we're always typically in the top five. And so we need to get their attention and get some assistance and then see if we can get out of the top five. We did have our redistricting meeting on Saturday. This is nothing new for the board, but I do want to remind the public to go ahead and go to our website. There's an easy image that you can click on that says redistricting. And at that point, we're looking for your input for communities of interest. So please go to our website, provide what you believe are communities of interest for us, maybe review our meeting. It's not a long meeting that we had, so you can understand exactly what we're looking for, for communities of interest. But it's things that are similar within a community that we want to make sure and not split up between districted zones. I will ask if it's possible for staff. I went through the process, went through the website and tried to provide a map. If there's a little bit better of an explanation on how to utilize the map and how to get the actual PDF from the map and where to submit it, we did express that specifically during the meeting and I was reviewing that meeting as I was going through it, but it wasn't very apparent to me when I went on the website. So if we could provide a little bit better direction, I think that might be helpful.
And so Matthew is listening and I assume he'll work with IT to get that, to make it more user friendly?
Yeah, and the mapping is user friendly. It's just understanding, maybe telling people specifically what tools to use in order to help. I had to find all of the tools and I was able to get by and figure it out, but we want to make sure to make it as accessible as possible, which is great that we have a GIS map and tools to be able to make lines. But we also have to make sure and understand how to get the final product done in order to submit it over to the redistricting at lakecountyca.gov. We did have our Middle Creek Restoration Project on Monday. Just want to tell you that as of Friday? I forget when. Friday or Saturday, we officially got our extension letter approved by the State Water Resource Board. And June 2023 is now our new deadline. And so we are continuing to do the work necessary. I will say we hit a snag. The 100-year flood zone is not correct. And so as we're looking at the new, the lines for what properties we're acquiring and what kind of partial property we're acquiring, as we do the review, we're realizing that those 100-year flood zones from the state and from FEMA are not entirely correct. So we have houses right now that are being split in half by this flood zone when before it was completely off of the, those properties. So we're trying to rectify the problem and make sure that we're going to move forward in a way that doesn't stall or prohibit us from moving forward. But it's just, it's good that we catch it now, then we catch it way too late in the long run. Let's see, we're doing our Lake APC meeting tomorrow. We're going to be taking our field trip as Supervisor Simon mentioned. And also later on that afternoon, there is a transit center presentation for staff and bus drivers, so I'll be taking part in that. On the 7th, again, getting to start with Judge's Breakfast. It was great to see everybody again and looking forward to those happening weekly. And then we have our special meeting in the afternoon and then ending my day with a Clear Lake City Council meeting. And then on Friday, meeting with Behavioral Health about facilities. I know I have something on the 9th. I can't think of what, oh, yeah, 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 on the 9th. Important. I believe it's from 12 to 2, but I'll be there starting at 9. At Lower Lake Elementary School, there is the giveaway to the cash fire survivors. I know that Candy Alka has been involved. She's the Bike Angel. I don't know a better term or a better name for her, but she's done some amazing work for all fires that we've ever had. I know she worked in the city of Clear Lake for the sulfur fire, probably started with the valley fire. I'm not sure if she had started this before, but she's amazing, has a huge heart. And even though she is in Florida, still continues to do this level of work and it is just, it's amazing. And I'm sure that everybody has such a warm feeling when they go and meet her and receive all the gifts that they're going to receive to help alleviate some of the trials and tribulations that they've been through. Then on the 11th, we have the train presentation for GO-BIZ, meeting with Carol. No, no, not happening because we've got nothing else left, but we also have no meeting on the 12th. Peg Board meeting on the 11th. Fairly...
The meeting's at 3, right? Which way are you meeting?
I have it here at 3:30.
You have a calendar for that?
Maybe start at 3, but no, I have one directly from them inviting us at 3:30. So that should be the correct time. Then I have a pretty light week so far. And on that Friday, the 15th, I've been selected as being part of the new chancellor for the Yuba Community College District, looking through the candidates for the new chancellor. So I will be part of, it's an extremely long process all the way through February, but starting in October. First, we need to be trained and go through the right trainings and then afterwards, we'll be going through the candidates, but we are starting on October 15th. And so I'm looking forward to being a part of that and appreciate the invitation. And then again, meeting with our CAO and getting ready for the meeting on the 19th. And that will do it for our open session. We will be going back to closed session and both items are still being discussed. And let me read you 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation Title, Director, Community Development Director. And then 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation Title, Director, Public Health Services. And with that, we will reconvene to closed session. Thank you.